...of the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Audeman Lauer.
Here.
Audeman Sage. Audeman Malumboy.
Here.
Audeman Burgess.
Here.
Audeman Schmidt.
Here.
Audeman Painter.
Here.
Audeman Black.
Here.
Audeman Harmon.
Here.
Audeman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. And we have started with public comment.
I'd like, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion that we move public comments to after item nine on the agenda, which would be after the last discussion point.
And then the reason would be that we would, because we haven't seen some of this information, everybody would hear what we're talking about before we entertain public comments. So the public comment would be more informed.
We did this before with the last downtown discussion, so it's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any discussion? Okay. Actually, I guess we have to do a vote on that. I vote would be to put public comment to after we have our presentations. That would be before the automatic debate. Okay, so it would be after the public presentations.
After item nine, which is after the council discussion regarding budget priorities.
I misunderstood, so after item nine.
So after all the discussion points are done, that would then be public comment at that time.
My apologies, that was everyone's understanding. Okay? So anyway, so an I vote would be to move public comment to after the presentations and then automatic discussion. Okay? Anyone else want to vote? Okay. Okay. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to consideration of approving the committee of the whole minutes from September 21st, 2015. Is there a motion to approve as presented? Moved by Alderwoman Painter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any discussion, corrections? Sign on, I think we do that by voice vote? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Next presentation, best practices for public-private partnerships, Stephen Friedman of SB Friedman Development. And we have approximately a 20-minute presentation and approximately a 20-minute discussion. And just so that everyone understands, we're, Stephen Friedman is a consultant of ours, actually a former author from the International City Management Association who's with us this evening. And then we will hear some specific proposals by Mr. Jeff Gabelhausen and Mr. David Bentley for development in our downtown. And as I had mentioned this morning on WJBC and talking with Mike McCurdy from the Economic Development Council and Scott Lockland a couple of years ago, we didn't have anybody who was willing to dance with us in downtown, and now we've got a couple of possible suitors. So we are quite happy about that as possible interest in growing our local economy. Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council and the community. I'm happy to be here today and to share with you some of our thinking about how you begin to manage that interest and, in fact, further stimulate interest in a downtown area. And I understand this is coming on the heels of many years of discussion, debate, some work on planning downtown, but still a lot of discussion and consideration of what's the place to start, what's the right first project, and how do you manage these projects to the benefit of the city as well as to the developer. So that's really what we try to do in the work that we do. We work with both public and private sector parties, most of it with the public sector, and we try to help bring forward deals that are positive and beneficial for both. And what I want to do in today's presentation is to talk a little bit about the private issues and the public issues that affect real estate transactions when you're trying to do a partnership, and then go through and talk about eight or nine key issues that we think are important as you try to bring a project to fruition. And they're listed on the screen. We'll go through them one by one. Planning and goal setting, a policy on how you incent and assist projects, what kind of tools, how do you use an application for assistance, what kinds of information do you request, how do you get engaged early, what is it appropriate and often necessary to do in order to be ready for development, how do you choose your partners you're working with, what are the benefits, how do you structure a transaction and deal with the financing gap, and then how do you document and monitor deals? I know that's a lot to think that we're going to do in 20 minutes, and I'm going to try and do it as quickly as possible. It's important for both the private and the public sector to understand the perspectives of the other side, if you will. From the private sector side, there's often a lot of hair on a deal, hair is a technical real estate term, hair on a deal in a public context and particularly in a redevelopment context, whether that's downtown in a neighborhood or wherever. We have landowner holdouts, we have unknown soil conditions. We often talk about just plain urban soils, which means that something happened there, but often we have far worse than that. We have buildings on sites, which complicates land assembly, and it also means they have to be demolished. And if they've already been demolished, often unfortunately, they were demolished improperly and the rubble dumped in the cellar hole, covered with a few inches of top soil or soil of some sort, and that means that you have to excavate the whole thing, and some of that is not known. Developers are going to look at a deal from the standpoint of product from the standpoint of what the market will support, but will often come up with density and height and design and parking approaches that are different than what the community may want. So that becomes one of the points of contention. The costs of working with the public sector are a concern to the private sector. And the market, the private market may want a product that is not exactly what the public market wants, and then the developer has to deal with the private real estate financing markets and with satisfying the issues of equity and debt and mezzanine investors as well. On the public side, the public sector has a lot of public values that it brings to the project, and a lot of those revolve around urban design, around the character of the community, again, expressed in height density, traffic, and parking issues often. A lot of communities have a strong preference for homeowners when markets might prefer rental housing currently. We've had concerns raised about the life cycle of apartments and what happens to them down the road. Obviously, we've run into that one very often. Here, we're not talking about apartments today, talking about other uses. The question of whether the fiscal impact will be positive, whether there's enough in it for all of the districts involved, particularly if we're using a tax and financing district and needing to capture revenue that would otherwise flow to other districts in order to support a project. And the fiduciary responsibilities go along with that. And then most of the time municipalities will add to the project a concern with MBE and WBE employment and prevailing wage is required by state law when any kind of public assistance is provided to a project in almost all cases. So these are contrasting issues and values that then have to be melded together and resolved in order to have a workable deal. And when should you have public involvement and use of finance tools in a public-private partnership? And I would argue that it's when we have key community goals being achieved and we're implementing plans around which there is consensus, when we have a project that will be marketed and financially feasible with the assistance that is being provided. So we need to be very cautious that we are working with projects that can succeed, we want success, that there are significant community benefits, some of them plain fiscal, others that are qualitatively measured, not disquantitatively, that there is a return on that public investment eventually. It takes a while if we need to close a financing gap because of a variety of issues I'll talk about later, or in some kinds of uses where we're just meeting a competitive challenge, not the consideration of the projects that you're going to hear about later tonight, but that's another kind of a project. And then in doing those deals and those transactions, we have to find ways to share risk appropriately so that the public sector's risk is limited. There is nothing in life that is without some risk, but we try to find ways to ameliorate that risk by both understanding that the project is in fact going to be feasible or has a good chance of being feasible and how we structure the transaction. We'll talk about some of those ideas. In planning and goal setting, it's very important to come to a consensus about which are your most important projects and which are your most important goals. But it's also important that that occur in the context of understanding what is in fact reasonable and what is in fact feasible. We like to suggest that a successful project results when the economic feasibility, community goals, and the physical reality of the site come together to be, and are all in congruence with each other. And I've seen projects that meet one or two of these conditions and then fail because they do not meet all those conditions and you just can't make them work. And so you've gone through a planning process with FAR Associates a few years ago. I understand you've discussed the results of that plan recently, and so that provides you a base for further discussion to help determine what your priorities are, what priorities, what the projects are that you can find consensus around, and then you can move forward. I think it's also important to think through what are the terms and conditions and the policies that you want to have in place to guide the engagement with the private sector. We'll talk a minute in the next slide about what kind of things you can expect to receive reasonably from a developer when you're looking at a project. But what infrastructure are you able to put forward? How are you able to participate in helping create a site? How do you understand what are extraordinary costs and how you might want to assist with those or other means of assistance? What do you do when the project is not working in the marketplace? And what is the preferred development? And then later on, we'll talk about how much assistance do you provide? How do you think about the different ways to provide assistance? One of the things that becomes sometimes a point of conflict with developers is what you're asking of them as they come to work with the city. Most of what's on this list is material that eventually they're going to have to provide to their private sector lenders. There are timing differences, there are timing disconnects between when they may want to provide it or need to provide it to their lenders and investors and when the city may need to receive it or some preliminary version of it in order to understand that they want to and that they should or should consider supporting the project. But all of these things, developers often react negatively to this list and will argue against the need to provide a lot of these things, but ultimately, they're going to provide almost all of them to their private lenders. But there's a timing disconnect, so we have to work our way through that in order to get the information that the public sector needs in order to understand and evaluate and analyze the project and understand that it can be successful with public participation. Sometimes you also have to get really active in getting a site ready. The graphics here reflect three projects that we've been involved in. The top one is in Bartlett where the village bought all of this industrial land and cleared it and cleaned it. The middle one is Park Ridge where the city had a reservoir and then bought other land around it in order to assemble a site that would lead to a rather substantial development. And the one on the bottom is the, what I would argue was the ugliest parking deck in the entire Chicago region. And it was the barrel deck in Displanes. It was built as part of a misconceived 1978 urban renewal or urban redevelopment project. The first time I went to Displanes was 1981, and they told me they were going to tear it down. And we did tear it down, but not till 1995. So another issue is with whom are you working? It is often said in business that the most important thing is who your client is, who your customer is, who the partner is that you're doing business with. I think it's Rich Melman, the restaurateur from Chicago, who said, "You can never do a bad deal with a good person, and you can never do a good deal with a bad one." So it's going to be, it's important to understand who you're dealing with and what kind of business structure, but right now particularly, who the principals are and what their individual track record may be very important. We are still coming out of the recession. There are still companies that went away during the recession and their principles reformed, restructured, and are redeveloping or reestablishing their way of doing business. So you have to look past, sometimes past the exact business entity to the track records of the firm and individuals and references from other communities. You also need to understand the financial capacity of the developer and the principals in the project. And that's not a question just of getting a letter from a bank. We call those Swiss cheese letters. I'll tell a little story on myself. I have been a developer a little bit, and I was bidding on a development that the City of Chicago had advertised, and I had a partner who never paid a bill on time. I'd been in business for myself for about two years, and I was still living partly out of my home equity loan. I got a Swiss cheese letter from, I think it was still Continental Bank at the time, maybe it had already become Bank of America, for $10 million. That's a Swiss cheese letter, says, "Oh, we know these people, we're happy to finance them." That's different than the firm having the balance sheet and the financial resources to get through the planning process in a public-private deal. Because one of the problems in a public-private deal is that unless they are coming with the land, if you're selling them land particularly, but if they're coming with the land, can they mortgage that land to get pre-development financing? Or do they need to do it out of their own pocket? Often and usually, they need to do it out of their own pockets, they need to have resources to get through the planning process. Organizational capacity as well is a question, and then as we get toward a project, what's the long-term operating plan? So all of these things are issues in beginning to work through the relationships with developers. Whether they come to you or you are soliciting developer, most of these issues are still relevant. It's important also to be realistic about the fiscal benefits and the community benefits that may occur and the kinds of impacts that will result. You know, no projections are perfect, but you can work through the projections to get to realistic estimates. We use, for example, when we look at property tax generation, we always look at comparables because there are many variations and vagaries in the assessment process. So we'll try to find comparable facilities that we can use as a basis for establishing what realistic primary taxes are, or property taxes are. Realistic estimates of sales can be made for retail and restaurant uses, although they are sometimes difficult to do. So we want to be realistic about them and also be thoughtful about whether there are actually incremental service costs. In redevelopment, there are often far fewer incremental service costs than you would experience if you're talking about a new development in a greenfield on the edge of town. So you've already got investments in infrastructure, you have street networks, you have a base in place, so some of your incremental costs are less than they would be if you built that same development on the edge of town. If it's residential, we're concerned usually about schoolchildren, each development's going to have its own specific impacts. But there are also secondary benefits that can go beyond the fiscal benefits, long-term building of your tax base, secondary attraction, some of this is hard to measure, increased activity that helps support merchants, adding to opportunities for members of your community through workforce requirement. And in some of the residential projects that we often see in redevelopment, we're retaining long-term residents in the community. We're bringing them sometimes out of single-family housing into multifamily housing in a downtown context. They add something to the downtown, but they also liberate other housing in the community. And population is a tricky thing to manage in a community, so it's, part of that can be very, very positive. We've actually had some small towns where the school board has hired us to create a TIF to build housing because they want the kids. You may not be quite in that place, but that's the opposite of the usual argument that you run across in Chicago suburbs, but you're starting to see it there in some cases as well because their population trends are changing and they need to maintain school populations. Getting long-term residents into other housing helps to do that. When it comes to underwriting the deal or studying, analyzing the deal, I've got to be careful about the use of the term underwriting now that we're, now that there's more regulation under Dodd-Frank, that's a very specific term that has a specific meaning. So we use the term analyzing the deal. We want to look at what the project needs. We don't want to just look at an arbitrary factor. So there's a methodology on a real estate project that involves basically analyzing the pro forma, validating all of the assumptions, and validating the required return rates using a number of different sources as well as of specific research, sometimes in a specific market of what the investors are looking for, in order to determine the amount of equity and debt that can be supported by the project and then to determine how that compares to the costs and whether in fact there's a financing gap. And this needs to be done very carefully. If you overestimate the cost by 5% and underestimate the revenue by 5%, you will open up a very nice gap that may or may not really be there. So both in the analysis and then later in the deal and in the reevaluation of a deal at closing, all of these things need to be brought into balance. Now, historically, a lot of communities have used other factors rather than a real analysis of the gap as a basis for the amount of assistance that they might provide. So some communities will say, "Well, all the TIF-eligible costs can be paid for." That may not be the same as the gap. It may be less than the gap in some cases, but often it's more. The financing capacity of the district, the TIF district, what's total revenue available? We'll give you 95% of it, keep 5% for administration, not necessarily related to what the project really needs. We've seen places where they will limit the subsidy to a percent, an arbitrary percent of project increment or to a percentage of project cost. Sometimes that's too much, sometimes that's too little, and so each project needs to be analyzed in that way. And then, and the last one is an arbitrary amount of per job attracted. All of these have political value, but they don't necessarily relate to the real need of the project, so you can end up oversubsidizing or being unwilling to bring the resources to bear for a project that you would like to see in the long run. But you have to sanity-check the gap. We can make a lot of things happen in numbers, so it's always nice to know what is it really, what are the other things that really are contributing to the gap that you can see that everybody can understand? There's a major environmental issue, there was public infrastructure that was added, there are special features, underground parking, things like that that all drive the cost, and land acquisition costs drive the gap in many cases. Because even that crummy building, one-story building sitting on a lot, the building has a value that can make that site be worth more than, worth more than the value of a similar piece of land that's undeveloped completely. And so when you're looking at developing the land, redeveloping the land, you want to, your economics are going to be driven to some extent by the competitive cost of a piece of raw land in the market. This land is more valuable even if it's, even if it's a warehouse getting $5 a square foot or a retail store paying $5 a square foot. There's some building value, you have to take that out, so often land costs will also be part of the gap. We have to understand in structuring a deal, what we're trying to solve. Is it infrastructure? Is it an extraordinary cost? Is it a market weakness? Some special things that we want and as we think about the project. That's what we want to think about so we know where to intervene. And we also then have to begin to understand the timing issues from a public and a private perspective. From the private perspective, financing is often most needed at the beginning of the project. However, that's the riskiest and causes the most problems really for both because the revenues become available maybe two or three years after the commencement of the project, by the time the project's built, assessed, working in the market. And so this leads to a fundamental dilemma that interacts with various municipal tools that are available to help a project. The preference is to shift the risk all to the developer, have the developer front-end the entire cost of the project, and then eventually be paid back only with the revenues that are generated by the project. That can happen, but it's difficult. So there are other tools that are also used, and the most risky one is of course to provide the full faith and credit of the government with a general obligation bond. There are ways to think about doing that, but that is the riskiest and the most difficult from a municipal standpoint. In between, you can go to the market with a special revenue bond, and you can sometimes support that bond not only with the projected revenues of the project but also with other revenues. Rockford, for example, does TIF bonds that are backed by all of the sales tax of the municipality. They are matched to projects, but then the additional support would come from the sales tax. The Weston Hotel in Wheeling, the costs there were supported by a special revenue bond that was measured or sized against the tax increment, but the tax increment from adjacent districts and sales tax from the municipality were also used as additional pledges. So those are tools that are used. And then there are cases where GO is used, and we can talk about ways that you can do that and still manage risk. Some of the options, pay-as-you-go, which just straight limited to what comes, and if you have a developer who has the financial resources, you may get to be able to do that. You will probably end up paying a pretty high interest rate against that to do it, but it is possible. I've mentioned the various forms of monetization with notes and with revenue bonds and then other revenue sources. There are, there's also the option, or options of providing the assistance as a second or third or mortgage, so that you have, if the project's very successful, you have ways to get repaid twice. The developer views it as paying you back twice, but it's done commonly in Milwaukee, but it's done partly in exchange for and in relation to providing the funding through GO bonding. So they will provide it through GO bonding as a second mortgage. They'll pay it back directly from the TIF revenue, which they will then allocate and point at the GO bonds, but they'll also get a payment back on a junior mortgage. In Illinois, that has to go back into the tax allocation district if this is done as a TIF deal, and that's not so bad, it still comes back. Then you can also, another way to work on managing the use of higher levels of municipal credit, whether that's multiple sources or even a revenue bond, but certainly if it's GO bonds, is the way you manage it, which is to not provide that funding. People say upfront, but you want to provide it when the deal is fully cooked, when the developer has full financing commitments from debt and equity, has detailed construction costs and bids and construction contracts, when all of the other elements of the project are under control. In the case of a hotel, the flag is on board. All of that comes together, and then if you have agreed to do bonding, it all can flow into an escrow and be managed through the construction process, withdrawal requests, construction reviews by construction people and so on. The lenders are going to require that anyway, and it all can nest together to help mitigate the risk to the municipality. It doesn't completely eliminate risk, but it can mitigate it. It's also appropriate, particularly the greater amount of risks the public sector's taking, if the public sector brings in public land, to share in the upside. And so there are many ways to do that. A mortgage that doesn't look like it could be paid off out of the base project is a way to partially do that. A sharing of revenue above a threshold is another way to do it. And so there are ways to do that to make sure that you are, that you can get, if you've taken the risk with the developer, that if everyone is successful beyond what was expected, that you can share in that success as well. And then through the implementation process and a lot of check-ins and true-ups at the closing, make sure the construction costs have not... the closing, make sure the construction costs have not, have kind of come down below what you were expecting and the gap has not shrunk, et cetera. So those are some of the key factors that we think are important in managing public sector participation with the private sector in projects. It is how, how great projects get done in downtowns, in redevelopment situations where land has to be assembled, where it has, it has some value in its current use, it's beyond the greenfield, where there are additional public benefits to be garnered by the concentration of activity, the creation of that sense of community that comes from having a really vibrant downtown that people can point to as this is their place. This is, it gives them a sense of place and a sense of identity with their community. And so that's why communities do it. That's why they get involved, they're complicated, they, they take a lot of work by both sides working together to come to a win-win process, win-win outcome. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sure there are questions and comments from members of the council.
Happy to take them.
Comments? Okay, well, maybe, I was not sure. Okay. City Manager David Hale.
You know, since tonight, we're going to hear from two individuals who have hotels as one key core element of what we're going to hear from. Could you comment a little bit more on hotels as just a very specific market? What you've seen throughout your experience? And feel free to address that HVS study that we had done several years ago. So taking what you have just shown us here, kind of dig down a little deeper on what are some things for the council to consider, especially as we look at a hotel either without conference space or with, you know, significant conference space? Thanks.
Okay. Well, okay, so hotels can provide a nice centering function in a downtown area in the sense that they, not only do they hopefully bring business people downtown during the week, you have State Farm with some of its office functions downtown. I like downtowns, I wish more of their office functions were downtown. They have some. Hotel would provide some opportunity for people visiting there to stay downtown and to provide some additional activity. Certain levels of hotel also today will bring a, an additional restaurant option into the downtown, which can be very, very helpful in, in a smaller community particularly where there are not as many restaurants. The keys, keys in a hotel are important factors, the balance of the, of the traffic. How much tourist traffic? You have some Route 66 traffic, I don't know what your numbers are, work that I did further north on Route 66. The numbers were nice, but they weren't, they weren't huge. They were, but there's some, so you have some of that. You've got business demand and you have some event-related demand. You want that hotel to anchor into demand that is already present in the market. Hopefully, the man will grow over time, but you want it to have a good anchor and you want, it needs to have midweek as well as weekend occupancy in order to survive. It has to get to around, close to 70% occupancy typically in order to be able to be profitable. And if you just run the math, you can't get 70% occupancy on three or four weeknights or on two or three weekend days. You've got to have some of both. Meeting space, a small amount of meeting space is usually present in most hotels today. Even a budget, or a limited service hotel like a Hampton Inn will have some meeting space. The amount of meeting space depends on what kind of a meeting market you have. You have business meetings, you have some social events and social meetings, and there are ways to go further to study potential meeting demand that have not been done here. The study by HVS concluded that about 150 room, 150? 150 rooms at close to $150 a night average rate was sustainable in the market. We use HVS, we like HVS. There is no perfect feasibility study that has ever been prepared on the face of this earth. So as everybody picks over these things, there are always issues and questions that are not, that you can come up with and 100% answered, but we, we think HVS generally does a good job, and they covered a lot of the bases. In a, in a, in a market where you're trying to create a downtown hotel market where virtually none exists, you're going to still have questions because you're really, they're stretching to say, well, there's a demand in this other market, we have to attract it here. It's a little bit of a concept of created demand, and so there will be more questions. But generally, we, we find their work to be, be good and so that we'd have some confidence in the end.
And what about the synergies in with the Coliseum?
That depends on what the kind of program is at the Coliseum. So as I understand the Coliseum, which I don't understand that well, it's some sporting events and some music events, and it doesn't have much meeting space. Now whether it should have a lot of meeting space is a question that you'd need to answer by a much more specific analysis of meeting markets. And so the way you, the way that we've done, I know you have anecdotal data from, you've had it out there for X amount of time, but you've not really offered a full meeting package with a certain number of hotel rooms that are in balance with the meeting space. So there is a kind of study that can be done in which the entire inventory of state and regional meetings and events that go on that use different kinds of space is inventoried, it is known and refreshed and then penetrated, captured against the competition. A lot of the statewide meetings will just move around the state, they'll go from one town to another, and so you get in the circuit. And so they can quantify that meeting demand. That, you've not had that study as far as I know, at least that was not part of the scope of the HVS study. That will then generate additional knowledge of room nights. The problem is that meeting room nights peak, cause peaking. So you can actually end up with some additional issues in terms of hotel demand. You can, you can find peak demand for more rooms, but you have trouble supporting those. What you hope for at the end of the day is the meeting market will support the operating cost of facility, and the same with an arena, and then the, the capital costs are funded by other taxes often. So you, if you go up to Chicago, you know how many taxes you pay in a taxi cab? You know what your soft drink tax is in the central area of the city? You know what your, all your sales taxes, all of them are higher because they're capturing tourist spending through those taxes to pay for McCormick Place in Navy Pier. And every smaller city that has meeting facilities finds themselves doing similar things to support the capital cost, but, and to support sometimes the hotels, but also they're doing that with the base of the, with a base where they try to balance out the meeting facility and the arena, generate enough revenue to pay their own costs. So that's, those are some of the issues that you might face there, looking at trying to build on the base of the arena, to try to really understand what you'd have to do.
Other questions?
Quick question, does that include sporting events as well?
Yes, the same, the same goal for sporting events. You want them to cover the operating costs of the facility, but you don't necessarily expect them to cost, to cover the capital cost. You've tried, you have to fund that from, from other things. Now that's, we've seen a little shift away from that in some of the bigger venues. Mayor Emanuel really stood hard against the Ricketts and gave them nothing, nothing. They're doing it all themselves. So all of you guys who are, what is it, TD Ameritrade is their company? All you TD Ameritrade customers are helping support the Cubs in Wrigley Field. But most, up until recently, almost every sporting facility has had significant public funding on the, on the capital side, or a significant tax break or some other element that makes it possible. United Center pays almost no property taxes, for example, as their assistance.
Okay. Other questions? Jim?
Thank you. I'm not sure how to ask this question, but with the age of our downtown, I think sometimes we get into discussion of old and historic and retrofitting and remodeling and new and, so I'm not sure how to ask this question, but just give me a little perspective of what your experience has been with revitalizing a older downtown.
Well, the, they're almost, most of them have some age, which is a good part of what you really want to build on because it's part of what creates the emotional hold for people is to, these, this is, these are things they grew up with, these are things that remind them of history and they, they pass that on to their, to their families. So it's actually, the historic character is usually a key asset in downtown. The picture there on the bottom left is of a new development in Park Ridge, but right across from it is the Pickwick Theater, which is the most iconic building in Park Ridge, Illinois, if you've ever been up there. You apparently have, Diana. So you try to complement that and you try to complement that with the, with the architecture of the, of the new as well. I showed, during the work in Park Ridge, I showed the council pictures of developments that, you know, looked sort of like that, some of them. And one of the aldermen said, but that's all old. I said, no, it's not. That's all brand new, all built in the last five to 10 years. It's all, but it's all compatible with the aesthetic of the old. Now, a couple of other things. There's, there is an argument in the historic preservation and urban design world about what you do and in the historic context. Do you build something that has historical elements copied or do you build a good modern architecture of similar materials, similar mass and form and scale, similar scale? And it's a debate that's gone on as long as I've been in the field. I, I actually helped rewrite the Wisconsin Historic Preservation Legislation in the seventies. So this kind of debate's been going on all that time. But it, you, you can bring modern elements in, you don't have to have everything be, be historical in its nature, and so you can build on that. Another thing that to look for, in historic preservation, it isn't, and in, and in renovation, it isn't necessarily cheaper than new construction. Absent a real structural analysis, I will usually start out assuming that to do whatever demolition, whether it's partial or complete, and to fix the envelope is going to cost as much as building a new envelope. Now, we hope that when we get into the details, that's not the case, but it would be, I believe, a mistake to assume that if you're really doing a real renovation job on an older building, whether it's historic or not, that you're really going to save a lot of money if you're really going to bring the building up to modern standards on the interior. So it's, it's not cheap, but it, it does retain the character and that retains a lot of the emotion, which is part of, part of what ends up making a downtown work, in my opinion.
Alderman Lowers, Kevin.
Maybe you could elaborate for us just a little bit more on mitigation of financial risk over time. I find it very interesting you talking about the second or third mortgage and recapturing the revenue over time. What if the project fails? And we hold the mortgage to that and we actually own the property and then it's, it's our baby one way or the other, right?
Well, if it's a second or third mortgage, you're not really going to own the property because you got a first mortgage holder who has the, the first mortgage on it. There are a couple, there are many things you can do. So it depends how you came into the deal. If you, if you brought the land into the deal, you might have a land lease with a right to cure. So if you owned the land for some reason. That, to me, that's not probably enough to justify going out and buying land that you wouldn't otherwise have bought, but if you, if you do, that, that's another possibility. If the project really fails and you had a second or third mortgage, in all likelihood you may lose that unless you want to cure the first mortgage, which you probably don't want to do. But if the project then, if project is completed, so this is where, before you put any money in the deal, it's important that there be complete funding to complete the project. You may even have, you may try to get construction bonds and even letters of credit to ensure the project can be completed. But you want full funding before you really, you let loose with any, any public money or reimbursement upon completion if the developer has enough resources to, to do that, even if you're paying interest on the notes that you would give in order to do that. So that you have a completed project. So you have a completed project and if it fails, it is likely to be worked out and from a tax standpoint, it may not fail. In other words, it may not be as successful as the developer hoped, but you may not, you may still get the taxes or a significant portion of them. So that's part of mitigating the risk, but you can, I don't think you can ever eliminate all risk, but you can try to mitigate a lot of it that way. I tell you a story, you all know Galena, Illinois? You know the De Soto House Hotel? The main hotel in downtown Galena, historic hotel. So in 1984, '85, we did a deal there and we put together, it's a 54-room hotel if I remember right. We put together a $7 million financing package, including an Urban Development Action Grant, a Community Development Assistance Grant from the state, historic tax credits, and in those days you could still do tax-exempt bonds on a hotel, before the 1986 Tax Act. So we had all that stuff there and we had a $7 million financing package. The developer spent eight and the contractor didn't stop working. So needless to say, it eventually all cratered. But the hotel eventually was bought for what its economic worth was and came back and operates as a very successful small hotel, but just not at that $7, $8 million level. That's an extreme case, but the, you do still have the asset at the end of the day, doing the things it's supposed to do in the tax rolls if, if you get the thing built and operating. So that's part of what you try to build in to make sure it's going to happen.
By that, you're just suggesting that even if it's not as successful as projected, a failure means you still have the asset, so it's not like you're going belly up?
Right, and you, and it still should be paying taxes at some, some level, hopefully the, the level you expected, because you, you can have that working even though the developer may have been wiped out.
But if we've got somebody coming down who's a retailer or hotelier, they're going to do their own analysis too.
Right.
Before they're going to come down and, and put their skin in the game.
They are, but you know, it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be a less thoughtful analysis than you think, and it's going to be a less thoughtful analysis than in fact you got from HVS. And when you get to that point, the, an in-depth analysis will, that is updated, will be helpful to share with them, to help guide them to understand the market, because they're, they're going to do something that's very quick and very formulaic in terms of how they look at the market. They're going to look at the site, they're going to look at the occupancies and average rates of a few competing or comparable properties in the market and make a fairly quick determination. So it's.
So not as thorough as the HB study, HVS study?
I don't think it would be as thorough and if, and if, and if there's a, if there's, because you're pioneering the downtown market, the more information you can provide them as to where that demand is coming from and why people would come downtown instead of going out to Veterans Parkway is going to be helpful.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. My question is, I was looking at your website and you had nine pages of various projects that have been successful, and I'm sure you've had conversations with councils like this across the state. And I'm sure some councils have decided that this isn't for them and they don't want any piece of, of public-private partnership. And is that the case? Have you had experiences where you've consulted and then the council decides they don't want to move forward?
That's usually a fairly early decision as opposed to one where you're well down the path, but yeah, there are, there are some communities that have just chosen to let the market go the way it is.
Absolutely. And in those circumstances, has development occurred on those sites where the conversation was focused on?
Not usually without some sort of assistance at any significant level. And you know, there are cases where different tactics are used. They're not always in-depth financial tactics. They may be that somebody will change the zoning and allow more density when the market will support that density, allow more height and so on. So there are, there are, you know, there are cases. So there are, you know, there are cases.
The magic one where, you know, somebody swoops in and developer comes in and does it all on their own and it reaches the levels of some of the pictures you've shown here.
I'm trying to think of one like, of one like that. And I really can't think off the top of my head of one where, because I'm usually working, we're usually working in a context where there are problems with site assembly, there are problems with remediation, and there's just intrinsically a role the government plays in dealing with those things. Whether or not they end up financially subsidizing a project, there, you know, who, nobody else, if the zoning in the downtown is for three stories and the market will support seven or eight or 10, there's a market for, say, you know, mid-rise for hotel or for mid-rise, mid to higher-rise residential. And the, but that's what the zoning has been historically. Who can change that? Only the government. They have to get involved.
Sure.
And they will fight, have a fight usually with a bunch of people in the municipality. Say, "That's not the character we want." And so then sometimes they'll say, "Well, okay, that's not the character you want, but you want something more than is there, then we have to put money in the game." And so you do that. So there's, in redevelopment, there is almost always some involvement of the government unless you're dealing with a very high market and a lot of density is allowed.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you on. Mr. Gabelhausen, we have you budgeted for a presentation and then brief council discussion or Q and A.
Okay, thank you. I may ask Austin to jump up and get me to the correct screen. Thanks, Austin. While he's doing that, again, Mayor Council appreciates the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Jeff Gabelhausen. As I think everyone obviously recalls, I was here back in the spring and we talked about a different opportunity at that time, an opportunity for the city to purchase some shovel-ready development land and then go about their own process. I find it kind of interesting tonight, page eight of Mr. Friedman's presentation is actually exactly what I proposed back in April, which is the, he called it proactive pre-development. So I guess just to say we weren't totally off-base in making that request and certainly respect the council for not wanting to go that route. I would also say, in all due respect, tonight I'm not going to make a specific project proposal to you. The reason is, is I have three different hoteliers that have different interests in downtown. Each one, as I'll sum up later, has a specifically different building they would use and a differently, specifically different outcome that they would look to achieve. So for me to come and present a proposal, I'm not going to come and present three proposals, quite frankly, what I need to know is whether or not we really want to have a public-private partnership. And I love the fact I'm able to follow Mr. Friedman tonight. I think he was right on point, obviously an extremely talented man with a lot of experience. As I look at this, in working with the huffs, when I was here back in the spring, I told you that we had a deadline and we did. I successfully negotiated an extension of my option agreement with some changes to the terms. One of those changes to the terms was I have to help the huffs come up with a final plan for their property. Now, that final plan means if we aren't able to achieve a public-private partnership, then part of the services that I'm providing them is to help them kind of figure it out. Figure out whether they turn the front and center building into an X or a Y or a Z. But it's safe to say that their attitude hasn't changed, which is, you know, they don't put a lot of money into their projects. I mean, but ultimately, they recognize if there isn't the opportunity for a partnership, then, you know, they have to move on with doing something at some point. Okay? With that being said, if I go through this, and let me figure out how to page down, so once I figure this out the first time, hopefully I can figure it out. Okay, we'll just go like this.
There it is.
Okay, we'll just move it like this. What the heck. Okay. First off, just a basic question. Does downtown Bloomington need partners and a partnering relationship? I'll tell you, I made the mistake over the last couple of weeks of starting to read some of the blogs. I guess in reading those, I'm convinced that there are a segment of town that doesn't think there needs to be partners because downtown is dead. Downtown has no future. Downtown has no, you know, opportunity for developers or for the public sector. So from that standpoint, there is no reason to focus on downtown partnering. Some people believe it can resurrect on its own. I thought Mr. Friedman's response as to how that might occur was right on. I will tell you, we believe that we're in the 80%. We're not in the 10% that believe downtown's dead. We're not in the 10% that believes that downtown can make it on its own. So we come from the 80% that says downtown can be something special, but we have to do it together. But we have to do it together. In that, I really believe that to get a partner, you need to be willing to be a partner. So if you as a city want to have a partner, then again, you as a city will need to be a partner. And that's what I wanted to discuss this evening. Will meaningful investment and transformative redevelopment happen without partnering? Again, just to echo what Mr. Friedman just said, it won't happen from the groups that I'm talking to, because quite frankly, it's about leverage, where they can do deals, where they can get the most bang for their dollars, for their debt guarantees. So if they have to spend all their powder, so to speak, in Bloomington, then that decreases their ability to do deals in other markets. So they want to put a reasonable amount of their equity up, a reasonable amount of their risk, but they're not going to put it all into any one market, be it Bloomington or anywhere else. You know, why should, from their perspective, they accept more risk or more struggles or spend more capital than what's necessary to get a deal done somewhere else? Because none of these folks are looking where Bloomington's the only opportunity that they have. I mean, it's a competitive market out there. We know ultimately that without the city as a partner, that the huffs do have other options with the property. They're not very good options, I'll be perfectly honest, but they do have other options. Okay? I want to really focus just for a couple seconds on whether or not tourism, a tourism-based economy, is important to Bloomington. I come from East Peoria, as you know. You know, East Peoria used to be Caterpillar Manufacturing and that's all it was. And now, you know, with what Caterpillar's gone through over the last several decades, what it's going through right now, our economy is very much a tourism-based economy. We count on people from out of town to spend their money. And the more we can collect from those people from out of town, the less we have to collect from our own citizens. I think it's real important to note that something as basic as a 100-room hotel generates about 35,000 visitors a year. And the way I get that math is pretty simple. Take 100, put 1.5 people in a room, put it at a 65% occupancy and you come out to about 35,000 people. 35,000 people spending money throughout, not just downtown, but all of Bloomington. Something pretty important. It's nothing revolutionary here, but every dollar, every tax dollar that you can gleam from one of those visitors is one less tax dollar you have to take from your own citizens. Or you're going through the budget cuts. I watched the meeting, you know, livestream several weeks ago. It's one less potential dollar you have to cut out of a different program or department. So these transient dollars are very, very important. Additionally, a properly-sized, quality hotel, it increases the attractiveness of the Coliseum and the BCPA. There's no doubt about it. We may not have the studies in front of us right now that tells us how attractive, how much more it increases the attractiveness, but no one could argue the common sense that the Coliseum will benefit from having full-service rooms adjacent to it. Nobody can argue that, you know, at least not rationally argue it. It also benefits other employers in town. And I got to digress here and introduce my son, Cody, who's here with me tonight. Cody, this is his golden birthday. He's 19 on the 19th, so I appreciate him being a college student and wanting to be here. But, you know, the point that I wanted to make is, I had the opportunity to attend my first Illinois Wesleyan Parents Weekend several weekends ago. But something kind of surprised me. There was nothing promoted to the parents about downtown Bloomington. The hotels, the Marriott or the Hampton Inn, both in normal. The restaurants, not one reference to downtown Bloomington. Things to do, not one reference to downtown Bloomington. And I think whether you end up learning anything tonight, I please, please, figure out a way to better embrace Wesleyan into the downtown. I think that was critical. I just, I was shocked, to be perfectly honest, that there was that big of a gap between these parents. And I met some great parents. I met a gentleman from Texas who's a real estate investor. And I got to thinking, wow, if he'd had some opportunity in downtown Bloomington, and he's got, I'm not going to say how many kids he has going to Wesleyan, but a lot, all at once, but, you know, somebody that maybe could have potential business interests here.
They'll be hearing from me in the morning.
So again, I just say, a quality hotel benefits the community in so many different ways. Competing cities acknowledge that hotels in their downtown matter. East Peoria, Peoria, approximately 1,200 hotel rooms in their downtown area. 1,200 hotel rooms, soon to be over 1,500. And those are the quality ones. Those aren't the, you know, the Motel 6, you know, that's been around for 35 years. That split is getting closer to 50/50 between East Peoria and Peoria, as East Peoria recognizes that they need those transient dollars. Downtown Bloomington, downtown normal, you have about 350 hotel rooms, of which Bloomington's contributing zero to that equation. So that's a big factor. Downtowns across the state are chasing hotels because they know the impact they have. But as Mr. Friedman indicated, downtown hotels don't happen without partnerships. Unfortunately, substantial partnerships, because the costs are more expensive in the downtown areas. I would just, again, tourism is a key economic driver. I hope the city, regardless of whether or not a deal's ever done with me, will really embrace it and seize it and make it happen. Let's look, if we could, very briefly, at the current financial impact of the front-and-center Commerce and Elk buildings. If this isn't disheartening, I don't know what is. But currently, there's $31,300 of tax revenue coming off those buildings. The city share, I just took roughly a 20% of the tax bill. So that means the city's getting about $6,200 a year in revenue. Fortunately, you're getting...
Just FYI, we're 13% of profit.
Oh, 13%. Well, Mayor, then you got, that's great for you, but you get less. So you're closer to about $4,500 then of annual revenue. Of course, there's no sales tax being generated in those businesses. There's no hotel motel, there's no food and beverage. Revenues off utilities are minimal. You know, basically, you're spin-off development, you know, customer creation for other businesses. Certainly, there's none because there isn't anything happening there. The impact on the Coliseum is negative. I mean, it can't be positive. Buildings are sitting vacant. How about the impact on the overall downtown property values and the other property owners? Again, it's got to be negative. I just say simply, it's pathetic and unacceptable that, for this key city block, that the city's only making, you know, $4,000 in revenue. We've got to figure out a way to change that. Got to figure out a way to change that. Tonight, I have four financial partnering requests of the city. So I'm going to make four requests. I decided to put these in memo form to have a little fun, partially because quite often, things are misconstrued, they're misrepresented, they're misreported, or they're just plain missed. So I'm going to be real clear here on these. Financial request number one. In this one, we're requesting that the city consider a financial contribution from your existing and current city revenues of nothing. So our request is that you give us nothing from your existing revenues. So I hope you'll consider that. Our second request is regarding a bond, upfront city financing. We're asking that the city provide, before we're able to bring you a complete project, complete with all the types of information that Mr. Friedman outlined, before we do that, we're asking you to commit nothing to us. So again, we hope you can do that. We want nothing until we're prepared to answer all the questions that the city needs. That being said, we move to a third one, and now we actually get a little bit more serious here. Even once we submit a proposal to the city, we're still going to be asking for nothing from the city's existing current revenues. We're not asking you to redirect revenues out of this fund over to this project. We're asking, even in the future, when we bring you a specific project, nothing from the current existing revenues. What we are going to ask for would be that the new revenues that are created by the project, that they be turned back toward the project to an amount that a 1.25 debt coverage ratio would support. Now, that 1.25 debt coverage ratio, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment, it gets to actually Mr. Lowers' question a little bit, which is, if the project doesn't work, if you bond the correct amount, then even a less-than-perfectly-successful project still has the public body protected. And that's where the debt coverage ratio comes forward. I will tell you, in all due respect, I thought it should be a 1.2 and Mr. Friedman reviewed some comments and upped it to 1.25. So give credit where credit's due. Not conceding that yet, by the way. Okay. Did you hear that? Okay. Okay. Why is upfront city financing or partnering needed? Seriously, why is it needed? Why is a bond of some type needed? Really, I think it's so important that we emphasize that it's to make the project financially feasible. It doesn't mean there isn't private sector investment or risk. I'm so tired of what I read sometimes that says, "Well, if the developer thinks this is such a great project, why don't they put their own money in it?" Trust me, the developer will have more money in this project, the in-hotelier will have more money in this project than whatever the city bond is. I'm quite confident of that. Simply because there might be a city participation doesn't mean that that absolves there being private sector risk or private sector involvement. Not at all. I would also say, it's important, just in understanding some basic math here, that private investors, you know, I mean, different investors have different levels of return, but a minimum, you're looking for a 10% to 12% return on a hotel. I mean, if you can go buy a Walgreens, you know, bond, or Walgreens, buy Walgreens stock and get a 6% or 6.5% return, you're not going to do a more risky, you know, hotel development without getting at least a 10% or 12% return. Higher risk, higher return. Simply put, though, we think that the upfront city revenue, again, just as Mr. Friedman said, it helps to level the playing field. Land acquisition, demolition, you know, in some, two of our three proposals have structured parking. You know, one, the other one's all surface parking, conference space. The city funding will help make that possible. Okay? I'm not going to bother running through this, you certainly can, but in real simple math, if we have to, you know, if there isn't a city bond, and here I use a hypothetical $8 million, if that interest rate is 4.5% or 4.25%, that bond's going to cost about $340,000 a year in interest. If that same $8 million was in equity, that'd be an additional $880,000 in equity. That means the project has to generate $540,000 more dollars in profit or free cash flow just to cover the difference between equity versus, you know, the debt structure. So again, that's why it needs to occur, that's why it really needs to happen, and that really leads to the fourth request that we would look to make under any of our three proposals, which is that the city ultimately consider an upfront bond, but again, that that bond wouldn't be done until you know everything about the project. It would carry a debt coverage ratio, it would be limited to project-driven revenues.
And just to clarify that, it's paid for by the increased revenues?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not by City General Funds?
Absolutely. Remember, two of my memos said no City General Funds, no existing or current revenues.
I'm just holding to that and I'm reiterating that.
Okay.
For the record.
Okay. In conclusion, a couple of things I'd like to focus on, you know, again, I've personally been working on downtown Bloomington for a couple of years now. I've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours, moved my son from going to Eureka College to Wesleyan, so that was certainly one of the best outcomes of this process. But it is, and the huffs have been patient, but from our perspective, we are getting close to, it's time for a decision. A decision whether or not a public-private partnership is something that the community wants to do. And I sum it up as three words. The first one's philosophical. You know, some people believe it should occur, some people don't, and I fully respect that. So I would just simply say, if philosophically, someone doesn't believe public-private partnerships or if the majority of the council doesn't believe it should occur, then that's a, then we just need to know that, because that's an answer and that's conclusion. It becomes mathematical, and with expertise that you have on your staff, with Mr. Hales and Ms. Silva and your consultants here, clearly, it's not difficult to figure out mathematically what a bond can support. I mean, that's, there's enough industry information, there's enough, you know, ways to make sure that's all quantified. So again, if there isn't a belief that we can get there mathematically, then we need to know that. And lastly, emotionally. I mean, at the end of the day, there still comes, if we fast-forward down the road a period of time and there's a night for a vote, there's still us bringing in, you know, our supporters and the other side bringing in opponents, and there's still the emotional night of a vote. And hopefully, by the time that night occurred, number one and number two had taken control. That it's philosophical and it's mathematical. So I just, I leave those at that. So what's the projects? And I know I'm running out of time, Mayor, so I'm going to be very quick here. It depends a lot on what our partnership is ultimately. You know, do we want to be small partners or big partners? Do we want new construction or do we want renovation? Because again, each of these are a little different. These hotels basically represent utilizing... These hotels, uh, basically represent, uh, utilizing, uh, tearing down the front and center building, keeping the Commerce Building vertical and reusing it for either office or residential. So, Commerce, the tower stays. But ultimately, the front and center site becomes the site of a new construction hotel with a couple of levels of parking below grade. That's the most expensive of the options. It's probably, uh, you know, you know, the, uh, the most extreme, I would say, in a, in a lot of ways. But it's a, it's a great-looking layout, and it's something that we have interest in pursuing, if, if you're of interest, uh, a mind of doing that. The second scenario, uh, converts the, I wanna make sure I have these in the right order, so I don't wanna mess you up. Uh, you know, if you take a look at this chart, matter of fact, it helps a little bit. So, so again, that, that first proposal, new construction on the front and center site, uh, with Commerce to remain, uh, we certainly demolished the drive-throughs. In that one, I would just summarize it up, we're, we're probably in the 120-room count area with that, and the parking, again, is, is two levels underneath. In looking at option two, here, we're converting the front and center building to a hotel. I would tell you, this actually wasn't one that was on my radar to do. I have a really interesting proposal on it, uh, from an out-of-state hotelier that spent a lot of time looking at it. Their idea actually is then to see a deck built next to the Coliseum on the combination of the Elks property and the, uh, and the city-owned lot across the street. And again, with the Commerce Building being converted into either office or, um, residential. The third version, third option, uh, which is an excellent site plan, takes the Commerce Tower, it builds, uh, a new wing, if you wanna call it that, uh, along Madison, with the conference space on that main level, and then vertically above the conference space, 40 or 50 hotel rooms, because the Commerce Building itself is only large enough to accommodate about 40 rooms. And, uh, we're not really, uh, believing that a hotel less than 100 rooms economically works at the end of the day. Matter of fact, one of the blogs that I saw, you know, talks about a, um, a downtown hotel that failed, and it had 21 rooms. Well, yeah, I, I, I can see that. That front desk clerk costs the same hourly wage, you know, whether, whether or not they're filling 21 rooms or 100 rooms in, in a lot of ways. So, uh, we believe that you need to have, in the neighborhood of 100 rooms, to have a quality project. Uh, but saying that, um, what we would do here is we would convert the front and center building, it'd be demolished, and that would become a surface parking lot to primarily support the hotel. And then we would demolish the Elks Building, and the Elks Building would become surface parking to support a lot. That also opens up a, a future opportunity for the city, as, as I've spoken with a couple of you about, that, you know, X years down the road, somebody, you know, comes along and wants to utilize that property, those surface lots, for vertical construction. You know, maybe a parking deck with a hotel on top of them at that time, or apartments on top of them, or office on top of them. So, just because we're saying surface parking, that surface parking can be viewed as an interim step in the process. Number four is, is a bunch of question marks, because, um, we don't wanna think that we have all the ideas. We know those three, we can present, the one of your choosing. But if you collectively have something else that you think is better, we're certainly open to, open to listening to it, because that's what partners do, they listen to one another. And then lastly, if, if there isn't a partnership, then really, um, you, you won't, uh, be seeing us, other than coming in and, and, uh, as lease-up allows, we'll, we'll pull the appropriate permits and, and get on with it. But we don't, uh, we really don't need to, to bother the council with anything else. The magnitude of the projects is to close out. I would say that, um, again, all subject to what the debt coverage ratio would support, because that's the underlying premise here. You know, you're not, you're not going to bond for more than what the debt coverage ratio of the project revenues can support. We've done some ballparking that we think, uh, option one, the new construction with the, um, parking decks underneath, that's the most expensive version. Each of these has about 6,000 square feet of conference space, by the way, is about a 10 to 14 million dollar proposition. Option two, which is the, um, front and center building being converted to the hotel, uh, and conference space actually on the lower level of front and center, uh, that's probably an 8 to 11 million dollars.
Again, that's, that would be the city's bond that would be paid for.
That would be the city's bond.
That's not the private investment.
No, no, and the private investment in each case is more than those numbers. Yes, we're quite confident about it.
Roughly how many times more?
I'm not, I, I can't, I can't go there.
Can't give, okay.
I can't go there. Uh, it depends part of, a lot on the flag that's ultimately chosen, and what the flags requirements are in the build-out, and how, how extensive the build-out of the conference space is, and, and so forth. And the third one, which is, uh, what I'd say that the, um, most economical, is the conversion of the Commerce Building into a hotel with a new wing constructed, and, uh, you know, parking being primarily in the form of the surface lot at the front and center site. Uh, so, each of those, I will tell you one thing that I can guarantee you, and I'll close with this, uh, if I don't go too fast, the roughly $6,300, but we now know that it's closer to 4, 4,000, that the city's currently getting off this block, we're pretty confident that we will beat that number going forward. Matter, matter of fact, my son said he would personally guarantee it out of his, his wages once he gets his degree. So, uh, you did say that, didn't you, son? Okay.
Did we get that in writing, Cody?
Yeah, I did say, if he gets his degree, 'cause, you know, he hasn't even gotten his first, uh, grades yet, so, uh, so, so the verdict is still out. But, but with that, Mayor, Council, I, I certainly do, again, appreciate the opportunity. I hope to have the opportunity to come back to you after, you know, and, and you tell me, I, you know, consensus-wise, we like this, or we like that, and hopefully, we can get back together.
And just to clarify for everybody, again, this evening, we were just having public discussion, we're not making any decisions this evening, this is, you know, we will obviously be circling back, but, uh, questions and comments? Alderman Black.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I wanted to focus on the top of your table. There's a, a little caveat here, it says, uh, does not include DUI countermeasures on both of the tables.
Yes.
Can you expound on, on what?
Yeah, uh, when I was here back in the spring, um, we explained that we had the entire, uh, Commerce, uh, front and center and DUI properties in that block. And DUI is the roughly 1,600 square foot building that is physically attached to front and center with alley on, on the north side. Uh, that's a very expensive building. Uh, we, remember, we had to relocate them into a different building in downtown, pay them substantial, it was about a million and a half proposition. We've determined, under any of our three scenarios, we can just work around them.
Okay.
So, we essentially look to save that million and a half dollars by leaving them in place.
Thank you.
Alderman, Schmidt.
Um, so I've learned a new phrase, um, hair of the deal. So, I have, I have some questions, um, and thank you very much, Jeff, for laying this all out for us. Um, so with the, with the, um, the three different scenarios where you've laid up, laid out the potential upfront bond, is that taking care of everything, like site preparation, demolition, soil sampling, all of the hairy parts of the deal?
What, what it's really meant to do is, is in working backwards with the hoteliers, we looked at the whole package of costs that the project has, which are all those things that you've mentioned, plus everything down to buying the towels for the guest rooms. So, we looked at what the, what those costs could be and said, now, how much realistically is the hotel going to be able to support? And what's that gap? So, we tried to back into what we thought the gap would be. So, yes, it does have all the hair factored in, but it's meant to back into the gap.
So, and you, do you feel, um, confident in knowing about environmentals and some of the other-
We're, we're very co- yeah, I mean, we-
Urban land?
Yeah, we had had, um, back in the spring, uh, environmental estimates, and, and again, depending upon which version is selected, there's different levels of, of demolition that, which triggers different levels of environmental. But we're quite confident that in dealing with, um, uh, the Stark companies, that those numbers are, are solid. I mean, we're, I, uh, we have taken the approach of holding the contractor ultimately responsible for the environmentals. And that, this comes from, uh, con- uh, developers that I've worked with in some other markets. A typical way for development, uh, uh, environmental remediation to happen is, is you hire a consultant to tell you what's there, and then you hire a consultant to come up with a plan to get rid of it, and then you hire a contractor to get rid of it. And then, in the fourth case, if you have a, um, if you have a demolition, then you hire a fourth person to actually demolish the building. We've taken the approach, after a lot of consultation, that we want the person that's ultimately responsible for the demolition to be responsible for the entire process. That way, if there's a gap, they're liable for the gap. If there's a timing gap, they're liable for the gap. You wanna obviously make sure, if you do that, that, um, that ultimately responsible party has the financial capacity to withstand, you know, any hiccups, and we're confident that, um, the size of this project, Stark has that, that capacity.
And, and one final question, in any of these scenarios where there might be a public-private partnership, are the huffs continuing to be part of your partnership?
Um, we have not really gone there. Their, their desire is to sell and, and be done.
Thank you.
Alderman Burgess.
On option one and two, you have both a hotel, and then you have some sort of residential, whether it be apartments or condominiums, or, or potentially business offices. This bond price that we're seeing, does that include development of both, or the hotel only?
The, um, it's meant to ready the Commerce Building in, in one and two for occupancy, but not the actual conversion into that final use. We're expecting that if, um, if we can get rid of the hair, as long as we're going to stay on that theme, that I, if we can get rid of the hair associated with the Commerce Building, then really, its retenanting ought to be able done in a free market, you know, free-market manner.
Okay, so while you may have the hotel individuals potentially lined up, we're not sure yet who would take the reins and do the final development of those bit, office or-
That, that's, that's correct, that's correct. I mean, a, a, again, we think it's obviously a good location, and if we've taken the hair away from the problems associated with that building, which, which are clearly documented, I mean, it's had, has no, you know, ADA accessibility, it's got some environmental issues, if we get those taken care of, we certainly should be able to find, um, an end user.
Sure, and is that why we see an option there of maybe business, office, maybe residential, because that'll depend on the, the market and who wants to invest?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, thank you.
And that, uh, the, it also is driven, residential has a different type of parking, parking demand than office does. And if we're not able to get enough parking, you know, in immediate proximity, then it really drives it to being an office use.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. We move right along, then to our next presenter, uh, Mr. David Bentley, and then we've also got a 10-minute council discussion. Budgeted.
Sir, Mayor, City Council, and staff, thank you for having me here today. My name is David Thomas Bentley. I was born and raised in Bloomington, Illinois. I've been here for 52 years. I just celebrated my 16th anniversary with my wife Tara out there, hopefully she's watching, and I have a son Devon that is 14 years old, goes to Trinity Lutheran School, and he's dreaming of his high school years at Central Catholic, which will be here sooner than I know. I was asked when I come here tonight to give, uh, an explanation, a little bit of my experience in the industry. In 1985, I'm showing my age here, but in 1985, I started working at the Clinton Nuclear Power Plant, and that's where I began my construction career. I, uh, moved out to the, what was then the Diamond Star Motors Plant, working out that facility. In 1987, the city of Bloomington built a new water treatment plant at Lake Bloomington. I spent a year on that project. And then in 1989, 1990, we started building the jail expansion of Law and Justice Center and the courthouse. That was my first project where I became a superintendent and started my management in, uh, construction. In the early 90s, I was a project manager at Corporate South State Farm. I did the new science building at Illinois Wesleyan University. There's tons of jobs, I could go on and on, whether it's the government center that I had done, the Bloomington Center for the Performing Arts, the Central Illinois Regional Airport. I can go on and on in the projects. I've been involved as a project manager in over $1 billion in construction. I have 30, I'm starting my 31st year right now, um, so I've been in construction a long time, and I know what construction is about. I put myself a team together, and I know I was asked also, I don't wanna miss anyone's names here, um, when I decided to present you with an idea, the first thing that I realized is I wanna put together the best team out there, the best team available, so I can come in being professional from top to bottom. And the first thing I did is retained an old, uh, grade school friend of mine, Mr. Jeff Tartar of Tartar Construction. He has 30 years' experience in construction, as I do. We have combined 60 years' construction experience, all in Central Illinois, uh, between the two of us. His associate, John Whitlow, is part of my team. We decided, we looked around at architectural firms, trying to decide who's one of the best firms out there that can put the whole package together, whether it's civil, site, um, landscaping, interior architectures, and that's when the Farnsworth name kept coming up. Uh, we were fortunate enough that Mr. Aaron Quick, who's here tonight, is part of our team, Dave Bernison, and Stephanie Morgan Thaler is on the team. And, uh, we've also retained a historical consultant, Mr. Gary Cole, who's here tonight, who's part of our team, to give us the aspects of, uh, historical preservation of the buildings that I'm gonna present to you tonight. We do have financing in place. We are working with Morton Bank, Community Bank, and we also have on board First Midwest Bank, that are part of my team right now in financing, looking at these projects that I'm gonna present to you. I have legal counsel by Bob Lenz of Meyer Capel, and I also have, last but definitely not least, involved throughout this process with me is Mr. John Albee, um, who's been with Bloomington Normal Area longer than most of us. Okay, um, what I wanna show you tonight here is, we have what we're showing right now as a four-phase project that involves four city blocks of downtown Bloomington. What brings us here today was the concept earlier in the year of the other hotel. And when we got together, started talking, and I know there was the discussion of the eight and a half million dollars to tear down some buildings and have an empty lot. Well, the first thing we did is scratching our heads and said, you know, eight and a half million dollars in one block, you know, can't we do more with that money? So, what we put together here today, as many of you know, I do own the C2 Building, that's been sitting there empty for three years for various reasons. There is leaseholds in the building, I could not proceed on that building, and that is, now that has all been taken care of, and it's perfect timing, that's why we are here today. Um, I also own the parking lot to the south of that, and then I also have an old warehouse there that used to be, uh, Champion Federal Warehouse. And then I recently purchased the Clay Dooley Building, and we started a first-phase renovation of that, and I have, I own all of those properties, so there is none of this acquisition, do you have it, do you not have it? Those properties are my properties. I have a contract right now with the Pantograph, uh, to purchase their properties. Um, there are seven parcels over there on the west side of Bloomington, and the contract is to purchase all of those. In my agreement, it, it, we, what I wanted to do is keep the Pantograph in downtown Bloomington. I believe, when I first started this, I asked you, Mayor, I said, "How important is it to keep the Pantograph in downtown Bloomington? They have 100 jobs." The Pantograph looked around downtown Bloomington, and there was no location for them, what they felt was, except for my warehouse, that has 20,000 feet. They came to me looking for 18,000 feet. I had 20,000 feet with parking, and fortunately, we have the Lincoln Parking Deck across the street, very critical in all of the downtown. So, what I am proposing here on phase one of my project is the C2 Building. When David Davis built that building in 1971, that's David Davis V., he built that building thinking that it was a perfect for apartments upstairs, and he wanted retail on the first floor. But what happened when David Davis started building that building was, local downtown business needed office space. So, as he started building it, the I, the apartment idea went away, and State Farm moved into the upper floors of that building. So, what I'm proposing now is to come through with David Davis's dream, and what I believe is a natural fit for it, is to put luxury apartments on the upper floors, and what we have is a restaurant on the first floor, a coffee shop restaurant that has a meeting area that will serve about 80 to 100 people for private meetings on half of the first The, the old warehouse building, which will become the Pantograph Professional Office Building, the Pantograph is gonna take 100% of the first floor, which is roughly 20,000 feet, we retained 100 jobs and keep them in the downtown community. I have upper levels that were designed right now as three different office areas, because we have one, uh, office that has signed a letter of intent to move in here, to, if, if this project can really move forward, they wanna come in the building, they want to remain anonymous right now, but they have signed a letter of intent with me with confidentiality agreements. But we have half of the upper of the building asked for already. But we have half of the upper of the building asked for already. That only leaves roughly 6,000 feet space of other office space that we do have inquiries on right now, um, for that space. Um, my third project there is the Clay Dooley Building. The Clay Dooley, I don't know if any of you know that building, very unique, cool building, art deco. And what I did this last year in phase one was, uh, clean up the upstairs, and I replaced windows, and, uh, was beginning to clean the building up, and I'm moving my business in there. And we've just opened up in there. Um, and so I'm retaining Clay Dooley's business in downtown Bloomington, keeping those jobs down here, putting Devon Corporation, and I own a business, Commercial Industry Coatings, there, and they're operating out of that business, trying to bring some jobs to downtown Bloomington. Um, so phase three of the project would be doing the Clay Dooley property, uh, the next phase of a tuck pointing, sidewalk infrastructure. If you happen to drive by there, all of the sidewalks, curb and gutter, all the way around that building are gone. They're, uh, they're, they've just gone away. You can hardly even drive into parts of the building because there's nothing to drive on, or they're off levels, it's bumpy. You have to have a four-wheel drive to get around that area. Um, so that's where there's a need for that property. Um, what we're talking about a lot here tonight is, of course, the hotel. That takes us to the Pantograph Building itself. When I first started looking at the Pantograph Building, I was asked immediately, "David, what in the heck are you going to do with this building?" Well, my first thoughts were regardless, I said, "What we need to do with the Pantograph Building, when you drive down Madison, the one-way street, you're driving up the hill, you look at the back of the Pantograph on your right-hand side, you're looking at the back of the building, it's extremely ugly. The loading docks are there and everything." Well, with my construction experience, it was instant. I said, "We need to flip the entrance." What we have to do is cut off those loading docks, put a new facade on that side of the building, and create that, the front of the building with all the parking that is in front of the building. Most people like to park in front of a building and walk into it. So in the beginning, it was a no-brainer to me that that building needs to have the entrance flipped and, uh, create the new entrance. Now, of course, I was questioned many times, "Okay, that's great. What are you going to do with that? What, what are you going to do with the building then?" Well, now that this idea of the hotel's been coming up, I was asked by someone, they said, "David, do you think that could be our downtown hotel?" And I put pencil and paper really quick and drew a little bit and got a hold of Dave Bernison and said, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And he put pencil and paper, and we said, "You know what? It works. We can actually make a hotel out of this." This is the first floor of the Pantograph Building. The circular drive is the north face, which is what you would be pulling and entering to, um, coming from the north, heading south on Madison Street. What we've discovered here, we're talking hotel counts, uh, room counts, and I'm anxious to get into that later. This building, the way we've drawn it up right now, on the first and second floor, creates 60 rooms. That's a boutique, lower boutique, uh, quantity of rooms, that's 60. Um, 60 rooms, we know, is a little lower than what we'd like to have, but one of the first thoughts were, okay, we can only get 60 out of this. And, and we know that, all of us have learned through this hotel investigating, is if one hotel becomes successful, there's going to be a second one. So I thought, well, wait a minute, maybe we start off with a small one in downtown Bloomington. Do we really want to start off with the multi-billion dollar skyrise? Can we really afford that? And is it really feasible? So I have two plans for the Pantograph Building, to where phase one, or option one, is to have 60 rooms in this building. If we want to start small in downtown Bloomington and say, "Hey, let's see if this one works." And then if it does, then let's look at another site for the second hotel. So we have 60 rooms in this building. That's the first floor we are showing, and, go back here, this is the second floor. We have a grand lobby to where you walk in, to where it's beautiful. It's open, two levels, and you can go to the upper level to the rooms, and we have a section of the building that's cut out to where you can look down into the lower level to give some really neat ambiance in there. The one thing we don't show on this drawing right now is, if you look at this drawing here, this is the first floor of the Pantograph Building. We have that same amount of space below it in the lower level. It's not a true basement. It has windows up high around the room. So what we're drafting right now, and I didn't have ready for tonight because we weren't really happy with what we had produced so far, is a conference center down there. We have 25,000 feet of area that's usable space, to where we've been batting around, what do we do with it? We can, we're going to reflect that as a couple of different options. If we feel that we want 10,000 feet of conference center, we're designing in there right now a little restaurant and a little bar area. So when we open up that lobby, you look upstairs to see the second floor. We want it to be open to where you look to the downstairs, to where we can open that up. So I do not show you the lower level tonight, but we are still working on that, and we do have ideas and designs for that. And as I said, we can have, if we wanted to make the whole lower level a conference center, we can have 20,000 feet of conference center. But one thing we've realized lately, a conference center, you use 20 square feet per person. So if we built a 20,000-square-foot conference center down there, we can hold 1,000 people. Well, the first thing the experts said to me is, "David, that's great. You're going to have 1,000 people. Where are they all going to stay? Are they all going to go back out to Veterans Parkway?" So that's where, you know, the 5,000 foot we're learning in this, the 5,000 to 10,000 square foot seems to be the magic number of what we could start off here in a conference center. But my point is, we have 20,000, 25,000 feet that we are still designing as part of this project. Now, this last week, we had a visit from a large, uh, franchise chain of international, intercontinental hotels group. They're one of the largest hotel groups in the world. They have 4,900 hotels in 100 countries. They paid us a visit last week. They're anxious to get here, once we told them, "We don't have a hotel downtown." They made a special trip from Indianapolis over here to see us, toured the downtown, toured this building, and said, "This is fantastic. This could be a unique boutique hotel." He said, "It'll be successful with 60 rooms if," he said, "one thing. You've got to make it so cool, unique, that everybody loves it." If anybody knows me, that's not going to be a problem. That's one thing I do, is go overboard in my designs and what I do. But he came up with another idea, as we stood there, and this is another option that we're working on right now, is adding on to the building. What we can do on the west half of the Pantograph Building is go up. And with each level that we go up, we can add 24 rooms. So if we decide that 60 isn't enough, if the council says, "Hey, we love the downtown hotel, we want a hotel," but we do want that 110 rooms, we do want the 120. If we go up two levels, we're going to have 98 rooms. If we take it up three levels, we're going to have us 122 rooms. So we're right in that sweet spot to where if we need that many rooms, if we feel a need, that we can provide those rooms. So with our options here, we're very flexible on this. If we want to start off small, say we like this idea, let's start small. Let's take baby steps here in downtown Bloomington. And, uh, so in this one site, we can have a variable of rooms, um, to get things started in downtown Bloomington. I don't need to tell you what we already know, you know, downtown Bloomington, I believe, is on the brink of good things. I think State Farm has showed us their commitment to downtown Bloomington. They're investing money in the fire building. They're staying downtown. It's obvious. Um, I think we need to work with State Farm and come up with a plan for downtown Bloomington. They're investing downtown. We all need to invest in downtown. Um, we have a lot of beautiful buildings downtown that I believe we need to preserve. I know one thing City Council has to deal with every single day, wants and needs. The thing that we believe we propose here are needs. We need to fix the infrastructure of all of the buildings I just showed you, whether it's the sidewalk, the curb, the gutter. We need to preserve the facades of these buildings, uh, to keep the property value up. If they keep going down, that, that's detrimental to the downtown, the city as a whole. So we need to retain the jobs downtown. I believe everything we're proposing is not just a want. Everything that we are proposing is a need. Questions?
I just have, do have one to start out with. Um, Mr. Gabelhausen started out with his, his development. He's saying, uh, he's asking in terms of, uh, any contributions from the city for current or existing city revenues? None. Uh, are, are you, can you make that same statement?
Well, I, if I understood it correctly, I am a little bit hard of hearing. But if I, if I did hear that correctly, I think he was asking for nothing right now, while he's working on the, the idea.
I think he's saying that he would, we would, the extent to which the city's participation would be in the form of, of a, perhaps a, a GO bond, but that that would be something that would be funded from the revenues of the project generated. So, uh, is that in your financial picture?
What we are going to do is look at the city to work together, uh, just as Mr. Friedman suggested. I do not come to you today with all the answers on the financial end of it. Now, I'm not going to hold anything back from you. We have numbers, and I'm ready to share the numbers with you of where we're at. I do not feel that it's my position right now to tell the city how to assist in this. I think that's something I need to sit down with city staff. This is a complicated process. To stand here today and try to throw things out there that, that sound good today, and then in the back room, when we're sitting down and talking, they change. Um, I'd rather come here today to let you know, I don't have the answers of how the city can finance this, whether it's through tax refunds, uh, the city's already talked about property tax abatements, you know, over the time, there's been a lot of things thrown out there. That's great. I think that's more your job, city staff, to decide, "Here's how." The question I have for you is if you want to work towards this project, and then we work towards how it can be financed on the city's part.
But again, from our standpoint as a council, uh, we haven't, you know, been firm on that, but at least in terms of our task understanding, at, at least in the short term, um, we would like to have projects that are revenue-neutral to our general fund. You know, it doesn't mean it wouldn't take risks.
Correct.
But that the fruits of the investment itself would pay for, uh, whatever the financial gap might be.
Yes.
So in other words, that, that's why that part is critical.
Yes. Oh, I believe it is. I believe it is critical. As I look at these numbers here, our numbers are definitely lower. As I look at the gap funding here on number one, on the 10 to 14 million, I believe you asked, you know, or someone asked, says, "Well, how much are you putting into this? I'm not going to go there." "Oh, David's going to go there." And what I propose to you right now today, we have a $21 million project to do everything that I just showed you. Our shortfall gap is $6.3 million to give you, and our numbers, uh, of course, we want to share them with Mr. Hales. So we're $21 million with a $6.3 million shortfall. That is with the boutique hotel with the 60 rooms. That is our numbers.
Okay. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I had the same question as well, so thank you for pursuing that. Um, this is a, just a, trying to get myself situated with your drawings. Um, there is one drawing that shows the building and the lot north of the Pantograph Building, sort of be, north on Jefferson, between Roosevelt and Madison. This one.
Yes, okay, this here, yes.
So, so what is, what is that? What, what, you didn't, I don't think I heard you speak directly to.
Okay. What you're seeing right now, on the very bottom, is the existing rooftop. That's the Pantograph main building. What is white off to the left is the new entrance area and the modified area. And the circle with all the plants, yeah, that.
It's picking up north.
Okay. That's our parking lot. That's the thing about our project, what we have also. We, we have parking. As we all know, parking is a problem in downtown Bloomington. In our projects, all of our projects, we have parking. Um, so we have adequate parking. We don't need the city to build us a parking deck here. I would like to see the building build another parking deck for the citizens of downtown Bloomington, but as part of my project, we don't need a parking deck. We, we have parking.
So just to clarify, are you doing something with the building that's on that northeast corner there?
Oh, no. That building is not owned by us. No, that is, I believe, that's Pantograph Printing. I do not know who actually owns Pantograph Printing. It is not affiliated with Lee Enterprises Pantograph. So, but that is my parking lot wrapping around that, yes.
Outside the scope of your project.
Yeah. Pardon me?
That, that building that sits there.
That building is not.
Is not anywhere in your project.
Correct. Correct.
Alderwoman Black, and then Alderwoman Howman on the side.
I don't think we can go through one meeting without you calling me Alderwoman.
(laughing)
Like four in a row. I know, right?
Four in a row? I thought it was.
Four, four in a row. Every time.
It's, it's got to be because you're coming right after Alderwoman Schmidt.
That's right. Um, so, well, first of all, thank you for coming in. I appreciate this. This is, this is a really, uh, interesting idea, um, and, and as, you know, lifelong resident in Bloomington, you know, the politics here can be, you know, uh, very intense at times.
Yes.
Um, and so I guess what I'm having trouble with at this point is, you know, I'll have to go back and explain to folks if we decide to go down, uh, the route with your project. You've sued the city, uh, you know, you've talked about how much money you've thrown at, uh, in those lawsuits. And then you look at the C2E Building, it's been sitting kind of like that for the past three years. I know you alluded to some of the, uh, challenges with the leaseholders and whatnot. Why should we do business with you? What is, what is, what is the, how do I answer that question?
Well, Mr. Black, number one, I'm, I'm truly surprised that you would bring up, I know the mayor's been on the air lately talking about that David Bentley's been suing the city of Bloomington for over 20 years. That is factually not true. And, uh, we are still in litigation. Uh, I don't really believe this is the forum to discuss that. I would be happy to discuss it. We have a case sitting at the Illinois Supreme Court. If we want to use this forum to talk about Devon Court versus City of Bloomington.
I'm not interested in that conversation.
I would go there. Okay. Um, I'm asking, as far as the lawsuit, there's only one lawsuit against the city of Bloomington. It has been going on for five and a half years. That is true. And what I'm asking is a question that needs to be answered. The question before the Supreme Court is, how long can a TIF district stand? I believe that it can last 23 years.
I certainly understand where you're coming from.
The city of Bloomington argued at the appellate court and won that a TIF can go on forever.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
Okay?
The, the issue there isn't, uh, you know, that's, not the forum for this, but, but my, my more, my question is more political and philosophical, is, is how do I answer the question of, you know, we've been involved in this litigation with you for so long. Why are we in business? Why are we partnering up on this?
I believe that litigation has nothing to do with what we're talking about here today.
They're two separate.
It's an interpretation of the statute. I want, you know, I know we don't want to really get into this, I believe, but, um, the whole state is looking at us right now.
Sure.
Chicago has 150 TIF districts, and ROM is looking at us. Everyone's looking at it. There's 1,300 TIF districts in the state of Illinois. How long can it last? Everyone's looking at it. I'm pretty confident that the Supreme Court is going to hear this case, and they're going to make a decision of how long can a TIF last. We need to know that answer. I, I, I get calls all the time from municipalities throughout the state now about TIF. And the question is right now, how can anybody create a TIF if you don't know how long it can legally last?
And that's how I put you on the side about this topic.
Yeah, I think we're getting off topic. Yeah. So, so your answer to this is, because we hear it all the time.
Sure.
And I'm asked it off the record and on the air by people, "Okay, what good, what good answer can we give?" And I think what you're saying is, that's a procedural issue that you feel by principle, you want to have settled in the courts. That doesn't have anything to do with this project.
It has to be settled in the courts.
Okay.
And it's in our best interest. That's the answer I'm looking for.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But let's address the C2 Building. What is your question on C2?
So some of the feedback that I get from people is that the concern is, we've got to look at the projects the developers have worked on over the years.
Yes.
And the C2E Building is one that's been kind of sitting there for some period of time, uh, about three years at this point, and it just, uh, looks, doesn't have the best look, the best facade going there right now.
Correct.
And, and so we'd be looking at someone who's, we, we have that track record, and now we're looking to get into a project with you in which, that's the track record we have to look at. So how, how do I go back to my constituents?
Well, that's not all the track record. I know you're newer on, on City Council. I owned the John McBarnes Memorial Building, which was a joint venture between the city and I, to where we restored that beautiful building. I think Mr. Kooz would speak highly of that building and that project, of what we've done there.
But the heart of my question, though, is, is more of a political one, is, is how do we respond to, we look at the C2E Building, how it's been the last three years.
Okay.
And now we're looking to get into a project with you in which we want to invest tax, or we want to invest our city.
Mr. Black, the C2 Building has been set and dilapidated for, I believe, like 15 years. I did purchase that in 2012. What, I'm sure you're not aware that I, in 2013, I was denied a building permit. How can Mr. Bentley work on the building if he's denied a building permit? Second thing is, we did have a leasehold in that building that I initially tried to buy out, offered money, tried to relocate him. Um, that was impossible. It did go to court. He wanted to stay until the summer of 2015. Here we are now, 2015. The lease holds out. We're, it's time to get moving on the property.
There's the answer to the question.
And I, I really, an important thing about C2 is that people wonder every day, and I did this for the best interests of the public. Everybody questioned me in the beginning that, "Why did I expose those ugly balconies?" That was all asbestos, sir. When I bought that building, the first thing I did was got rid of all, I had a, it's called a phase one, phase two environmental study. It costs a lot of money. I have that done on all my properties, to where we identify the dangerous materials in the building. The first thing I did within 30 days is have the asbestos removed from that building properly. Uh, so that's why those building, the, the facade is exposed like that. I had, which was worse? Having, uh, friable asbestos blowing in the air, or looking at that ugly steel? I'm sorry the ugly steel's there. When I did that at that time, I thought that I was going to relocate the people in that building. I tried working with everybody. I offered money. I bent over backwards. Regardless, here we are now, 2015. Everybody went their own way happily, and now we have a building ready to go.
I appreciate the answer to your question.
Sure thing.
Alderwoman Schmidt, uh, Howman. Okay. I'm, I'm shifting gender and names here, okay.
Karen, do you have a question?
Karen, do you have a question?
Howman and then Alderman Frue.
She's telling, she's, you know, she's sending, she's sending questions to me. Sorry. Thank you for the work that you've done and being a visual person. This, this helps to see what you've done and a couple of my questions have already been asked. It appears this is all going to be surface parking the way you've got it planned?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And do you have a timeframe for this?
Yes, thank you. I actually meant to touch that. And phase one is shovel ready. C2 is ready to go. We could start that project as fast as we can get a building permit. It's ready to go. We show completion on that. If I could begin it by December of this year, we would have people living in that in June of 2016. The Panograph Building, kind of, the plan is to go simultaneously, the professional office building. We can do that and C2 at the same time. That building's empty right now. I just moved out of it. It's ready to go. On our plan, we show both of those projects wrapping up in the summer of 2016. The Clay Dooley is more infrastructure and exterior, the tuck pointing and sidewalks and everything. It's too late in the year to do that now. What I want to do is that next summer. So that is one thing I proposed to you as a multi-phase project. So for your safety, if you say, oh, this doesn't work out, I'm doing mine in phases to where the city has to be satisfied and complete how it goes. So otherwise, we don't move on. That's the way I would propose it to the city.
Thank you.
Alderman Frue. I got both name and gender right this time.
Mr. Bentley, thank you. Seems like you're getting the majority of the questions, probably because.
That's great.
Probably because of the local ties that you have as opposed to the other gentleman. I think this is a meaningful question. It's one I struggle with and I'd like to get the answers from every council member, but that's another day. But what I struggle with, I've lived here all my life and I'm trying to figure out what downtown is. So to me, I think primarily as we talk about what we're doing, to me, it's, we talk about our anchors, the Coliseum and BCPA.
Yes.
But we could go around that little circle and we can talk about warehouse district. We can talk about the Clay Dooley Building. We can talk about the Coachman. We can talk about Gilead Clinic, Menonite Hospital, Frontier Lots, on and on and on.
Yes.
So, you know, I think we struggle as a council as to what downtown is, where we want to put our money and how we're going to go about this. You know, I left out the library in the south campus, if you will. But, and I don't think any of us up here can afford or want to support all these causes that I just mentioned and a few that I missed. But tell me, you've lived here all your life?
Yes.
Tell me what you see as downtown, where the city should invest our money and our efforts. And should we invest it between the Coliseum and the BCPA or are we okay going to the fringes such as Clay Dooley, Coachman, et cetera?
Right. Well, of course, in my plan, as I stated at the beginning, I believe it's in the city's best interest to spread that out to, to do a four-block project like I'm proposing versus just into one block. I am on board with the mayor 100% to where I think a hotel is a necessity in downtown Bloomington. It's going to do nothing but help the Coliseum and it's going to help bring other things downtown. So to me, what I'm proposing, the reason I'm proposing is four block to where we start cleaning up the whole downtown area. The Law and Justice Center is going to be building an expansion on the jail. I believe they're talking about doing a new bus stop in front of that, cleaning that area up. So the swath, if you look at my swath, what I'm proposing, we clean up that whole area minus Merle Hough's properties. But I believe the city's got to start somewhere in a plan and that's why I say in my numbers, as I looked at Mr. Gabelhausen's numbers, that's what brought me here today. I thought as a taxpayer, would I spend all that on one block if I can clean up four blocks for less and still get the hotel? Well, as a businessman, I'd look closely at that. And that's all I'm asking is I want to work with city staff to sit down and crunch numbers and they're, they're going to beat me up and I'm ready for that. Let's crunch these numbers. Let's see if it's viable. Hit me with a contract to protect the city of Bloomington. I'm fine with that. That doesn't scare me. That's the way I expect it to be. I look at everything from two perspectives. I always put myself in the other person's shoe. I'm here as a taxpayer also. Yes, I'm giving this pitch, but I can be honest with you. If Mr. Gabelhausen presented us with a bad plan tonight, a better plan, I would tell you to go with his plan. I'll still do something with my property somehow. We'll be talking next week about a second idea. But I believe I have the best proposal for downtown Bloomington right now.
Alderwoman Painter and then Milowamboy and Lauer.
Hi, thanks for your presentation. I was just wondering, what do you expect the city to pay for with the C2 East Building and Clay Dooley?
Okay. All of our $6.3 million is for facade improvement, improvements, whether it's curb, gutter, sidewalk, tuck pointing, windows, facade, the image, so that, for the public, everything that the public sees. What we do, I was asked previously, okay, David, is the Panograph going to move into your building? I have a contract for them to move in my building. Yes, they're going to move in. But what's that building going to look like? It probably won't look as fancy if the city doesn't help. So what we show in our gap funding, all of our gap funding is all facade improvement, parking lot, the plants. We talk about why doesn't a private person do this? A private person would not come and do all that landscaping and build all them trees and do all that. It doesn't pay us any money. The rent doesn't pay for that. So that's what the public needs to understand also. What your participation is, is to clean up the neighborhood and clean it up. Yeah, I can, I could rent C2 out probably low rent, low budget and leave it, you know, better than what it looks today. But what, if you'll look at our drawings to where the C2, when we're putting copper, simulated copper facade on parts of the building, what you see on those balconies, it's beautiful looking stuff. It's going to be a beautiful looking building that's going to help the downtown. I'm sure State Farm would love to look out their windows and see that building like that and maybe we could get State Farm to invest a little more into the downtown if they see that we are finally going to step up and do something.
Okay, so the $6.3 million is spread all over the whole thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Milowamboy.
I had a similar question about the $6.3 million, but I also wanted to know if that included the different phases in the hotel that you were talking about because you talked about possibly doing a first phase, second phase.
No, that, that has it as the 60-room boutique.
Right, but you, you did talk about adding.
Yes.
Several floors, you know, as time went by. And I was wondering if the $6.3 million would be included in that or you'd be coming back for.
It does not. That is something that just came up this last week. That's why, again, the Intercontinental Hotel Group brought up that concept and said, hey, let's look at this. They stood there, walked the building. That was just last Wednesday, so we didn't have time to put drawings together. We have done some rough cost of what we think that would be. That is probably going to be, well, again, I said 24 rooms per level. We're probably looking at roughly $2 million a level that we go up.
All right. And you'd be coming back to the city for more?
Well, that's something, as we sit down and go through numbers, we would, we wouldn't come back nor, we would decide that now. As I said, we have to decide on the feasibility study. Every, the 100 is the mark that you really want to be a successful hotel. But it, all because you have 100 rooms, what if we don't have enough people that really are going to stay down here? That's why we keep kind of looking at it as a baby steps. And that's where I really am going to rely on David Hales and us, our relationship of working together, going through this to figure out what is the best fit. It might be, you know what, we only want the 60 rooms. Let's keep it at a lower scale boutique hotel and call it the Merwin, named after Davis Merwin. I'm fine with that. That's one of my plans. If I want to keep it small, I want to name it after Davis Merwin and it would be the Merwin. Sounds kind of neat, doesn't it? We can have a beautiful looking hotel downtown, the Merwin. But if we want to take it bigger, Holiday Inn Gardens is interested. We put 122 rooms in there, it's probably going to be a Holiday Inn Garden.
And one other question, and I don't know if this question's for you or for David, but I, I know at this point, all we have is drawings, you know, when do we get something a little bit more solid?
Like the financials?
Right, the finances, because I, I mean, this is really pretty, but I'd like to see more.
Well, just to be fair, the, we just got invited here last Monday. This concept here just started four weeks ago. So we started drawing this drafting, is it viable? And I received the email last Tuesday morning, actually, and phone calls saying, hey, they're talking about you at city council. That was news to me. This just came up last Tuesday. So I think we put a lot together and we, my numbers are serious numbers. We can hold them numbers. We'll clearly show Mr. Hales where that money's going and what it gets us in the city. So those are good numbers. I, I don't want to throw numbers out on the expansion necessarily, other than the $5 million for three levels.
Forget our city manager.
Yeah, just, as you notice on the agenda, item number eight will be seeking from the council any direction and that direction could be to direct myself and our staff and our consultants to work with one or both of these individuals in a process that would allow us to get more detailed information and come back with, you know, based on the analysis, vetting, et cetera, et cetera, come back with further, well, recommendations in, in the future. Because there's no doubt, you know, on both of them, Mr. Bentley, you know, we don't have all the information we would need ultimately to help you address things such as risk, what's the true financing gap, et cetera, et cetera. But that's what we'll be looking for by the end of the meeting. Should we continue to work? Keep in mind, it's going to take some time and effort, but, you know, both parties have some, some property interest. Mr. Bentley's explained his, Jeff has his, and so if anything, we've got a great opportunity with two different proposals looking at making some significant investment in the downtown. We wanted to get both of them in front of you at an early stage to see if you would like us to continue to work with these two gentlemen and continue our analysis and vetting.
Alderman Lauer.
Well, I'm also from Bloomington. Lived in Bloomington proper since 1990. Our families have crossed paths many times, I think, in the past. Actually, three generations from Bloomington Normal. I'm sure you probably, I know your mother. So, and it is impressive to me that you're using local firms because investment and return on investment requires that. So that's, that's plus. But taking a step back and looking at things from a community standpoint, my, my big concern is that we've got to have the citizens, and it means all citizens, not just downtown, buy in on this project.
Yes.
We have an economics problem though, because I'm not convinced, and I'm sure many of those are not convinced, most, most folks are not convinced that we're not taking away from other areas of town that we've already got investment. We have significant investment in a number of facilities along Veterans Parkway. I've even got somebody in Ward One, and I'm being a little bit selfish here, but, who is talking about building a conference center and a large hotel on their own without any city additional help. All he's asking for is a standard curb cut and infrastructure to meet the lot. He doesn't think that this is the appropriate time for that. And so it gives me a little bit of pause to think that we should step into this in this current economic climate. That's a big, that's a big risk and I think that the citizens are interested in the mitigation of that risk. I like the fact that you're taking it in phases and we're biting off a little bit more at a time. Hopefully, we can see some success prior to, you know, getting into the full $6.3 million or whatever you think you're going to need here. My interest is, what can we see actually start a cash return on investment, a tax return on investment prior to, you know, phase two, phase three, phase four? So again, some financials.
Yes.
I don't think you're going away. I'm sure I'm not going away. So we're going to be working together one way or another, whether we as a city invest or not.
Sure.
What would your plans be if we didn't invest? What, what, what would you plan on doing if we did not do the gap funding?
Well, it's an unfortunate answer. So, yeah, what, what would happen to the Panograph Building? I'd hate to say the Panograph Building, it's going to sit there a while to try to come up with a plan and maybe approach the next city council with a whole new idea. That would be one of the options, being straightforward. Regardless, it was set there a while. The answer that, I don't know the answer is, how long? None of us would know that answer, is how long would it set? Would it turn into another Merle Hough property? Would I flip it to somebody like that, that's already offered to buy it from me? I bought it for one reason, to control its destiny. I want to see something happen to that building. I don't want to see it tore down. So I have had offers if I want to flip that property, but I know it's people that sit on properties and wait for the big change. That's not me. So there's a number of things could happen. It could sit empty. I could sell it to someone else. Those are the realistic options. The realistic option is two things. It's going to either sit there or I'll end up selling it to someone, trying to make a little money off of it. That's exactly what's going to happen. But Mr. Lauer, do you address like the needs of the city, infrastructure? We all know, to pay for our infrastructure, the public should know, there's only two ways to pay for that. We either have to raise our taxes or generate taxes. I'm not familiar with the third way, but it's one of the two. What I'm proposing, once again, is investment to generate taxes. We would hope that this project starts to generate taxes to where now we do have money to go over to the side.
And that kind of gets to the core of my question is, what is it that we're doing or not doing to actually attract additional people from out of town to cover this gap?
Right.
But from a business standpoint, I really think we really need to look outside the core of downtown and look at how we're affecting our entire economy and how we're affecting the other competitors that are in the market. I would hope that a large share of what you're talking about doing is going to come from outside the county in terms of investment.
Yeah.
Those customers need to come from outside. Otherwise, we're just regenerating and we're competing with people that we've already got. I'm not sure that's fair.
Right, I agree.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley, we're really out of time. One other question, then we're going to, I think, shift to council discussion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diana, did you? I'm sorry.
I do, thank you. Um, I think it's a quick question. If you were to, 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 um, go up, add additional floors, would you have to do that during the initial phase or could that be done later?
We would want to do it during the initial phase, the initial construction, absolutely, yeah. Now, is it impossible to start off as a 60 rooms and to come back later? It could be done, absolutely. It'd probably be a little bit more expensive to come back later. We would want to look at structural issues now to prepare for that if we even thought that there was a slight chance to make sure that we prepare it properly for the future expansion. But it, it'd be my choice if we decided that, hey, we really want the more rooms. It, we would save money to do it now.
Okay. Joe, follow it? Okay. Just one other thing, um, as we're considering these, except for the possibility of perhaps a hotel, the, your project and Mr. Gabelhausen's are not necessarily mutually exclusive. If the council had some interest in pursuing some of these, would you be interested in some of these, if not all?
I'm open to work with the city with anything to help, uh, the downtown area.
Okay.
Again, we have opportunity. I think it's prime time to take advantage of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure thing. Thank you.
And, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a-
I, I wanted to offer a framework for moving forward.
Pardon me?
I wanted to offer a framework for moving forward.
Um, I think at this point, given that we have on our agenda, uh, council discussion and, uh, this is the time.
Okay. Um, so of course I want to hear what staff has to say about what it is you're looking for from us. And I know, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'm certainly not ready to make a final hard yes or no on either one of these projects this evening. I know that-
And we, yeah, we can't.
Yeah, well, I, I know, but even, even a sense, I know that you're looking for some direction there. Um, and, and this council I, I found is, is very process driven, um, and in how we make decisions, which is fine. Um, so I, I guess, I mean, just as, as a proposal for, for me, um, and I, maybe we can vet this, the colleagues and staff can weigh in, is maybe by the next council meeting that we, we submit some questions about some further information if we're looking for it, maybe have a resolution if, if we're even interested in, in pursuing it. I mean, uh, Mr. Gabelhausen asked us some pretty pointed questions. Um, you know, I don't want to spin anybody's wheels here if there ultimately isn't support on the council to move forward with either one of these projects. And, and to me that comes in the form of, of a, a vote on the resolution at some point. So I don't know if it comes in, in just the resolution itself at the next council meeting, you know, or if it's a, um, you know, ask some questions or maybe the next committee of the whole, we can go into some more of the detailed numbers. But I, I just worry that, I, I don't want to lose momentum, but I also don't want to waste anybody's time here if there's ultimately no support up here for, for any kind of public-private partnership. Thoughts?
Okay. Mr. Hales, you wanted to-
Well, let me just say that I, I think we have a very good problem. Or in another ways, we've got a great opportunity, you know, with potentially, you know, uh, two different projects that are looking, and as the mayor said, you know, could go in tandem. Uh, so I, I, I think it's a, it's a great opportu- opportunity to have. Um, at this point in time, I would recommend that, uh, staff, that you as a council, if you agree that both at least we need more information, it is, is, it's going to be more helpful to get the answers you have to kind of, with the assistance of S.B. Friedman, to kind of work with both parties, gather some additional information and analysis and come back to you. And that, that may not necessarily be a final recommendation, but it could be in the form of phases. So we gather what information we can, as an example, with Mr. Gabelhausen, he has three different scenarios. We may, they need to come back to you and have further discussion, especially on that one block. But I think it is, uh, going to be very valuable and beneficial if at least at this point in time, uh, we continue to gather information, enter in the discussions with both parties. And as soon as we feel we have some valid information, analysis, as soon as that, that's, we reach that point, come back to you and give you an update and see whether or not at that point in time you want to go forward with one or the other, or continue. Uh, so I, uh, once again, I, I think that both projects have some value, benefit to continue to look at. Um, and, uh, I don't know, I don't see how we could dismiss either one at this point in time because of some of the value and benefit they come, bring to, uh, opportunities for downtown revitalization. But again, what we were looking for tonight is just that high level direction. And like you say, if the majority did not want us to continue to pursue, uh, working with the individuals, now would be the time.
I'm not ready to make that determination at this point in time, but I can't speak for my colleagues either. And I know that I would have further questions as, as we move forward. But I, I just wonder if it would strengthen kind of the developers' faith in us as a council, and you guys can give me a nod. Um, if, if you saw a resolution from us that says, yes, we're interested in moving forward, you know, on, looking through the numbers, more analytics before we commit fully, if that's something that would please the developers and please the council, I, I guess-
Well, we can't, we can't, I don't think we can do a resolution tonight.
Not tonight, not tonight, but at some point in the near future.
By all we can say is we're interested and we might have a resolution at some point.
What I'm hearing is, you know, we go back and look at some numbers, that there really isn't a, a, a hard, this is the direction that we're going, we're interested in pursuing it. And there isn't, we're not giving you the direction that you need to really focus in on the questions that we're going to have. And I remember the last time we had a discussion in, in May, there was a resolution that came along with that that was, uh, voted by the council that gave you direction to, to move forward. So that's, that's, that's where I'm throwing out there. I'd be curious to hear my colleagues have to say.
No, I think that, that, that seems to make sense that you, the city manager's nodding and I think, um, all the women-
You know, if I could just, Mayor, if I could just, I, I think at one time it'd be helpful to bring Steve Friedman back up because I think what he could do is also give some insight as what would be the most logical process in moving forward. So, you know, at some point in time before you, you know, uh, finish giving your input, I think it'd be helpful to hear from him too, some of his thoughts as to how, you know, we might all move, continue to look at these particular proposals.
Okay. Alderman Schmitt.
Um, I just want to agree with Scott. I think we need to, to have, whether it's in a form of a resolution or, um, a mutual understanding that we have a majority of people who want to continue to move ahead on this. We, we need to do this, the developers need to do this, adhere to this, so does the public. And I also particularly like the idea that we might begin to send questions your way. I have, I'm, got a few questions that have come to mind right away, so, um, yeah, I, I, I like that idea. Thank you.
So you, you'd be supportive of sending questions, getting answers, and then maybe come to the point, we maybe get circle back with, uh, Mr. Friedman? And then we, uh,
Right, 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 right.
Possibly have a resolution going forward. Okay.
Do the resolution later.
Let's see, Alderman Burgess, Lauer, and then back to the other side.
Um, I, I'm not sure that I understand, uh, the purpose of a formal resolution, so maybe you can convince me of that. I'm happy to defer, um, i- if council as a whole thinks it's necessary. I'm not sure what that gets us, other than to cause potential delay, as opposed to this evening, you know, putting our, our thoughts out there and, and making commitment one way or the other. I will say that in terms of efficiency, um, I understand the desire for council to be very involved at this point. We have, I think we all have a lot of questions because we are looking at a very broad, um, you know, very broad projects, not a lot of detail. I would suggest at this point, um, it probably would be more efficient for us to just philosophically say, do we support redevelopment of downtown through private-public partnerships? And if so, give it to the experts and the people who do this for a living and say, start looking at this data and help guide us through this discussion and, and help us figure out what those good questions are. Because, you know, this is not my area. I have zero training in it. Um, I hope that I can make a, a well-informed, educated decision at the end of the day, uh, but I think I need the help from the experts in order to do that. So I would suggest that if we believe this is a good direction to go in, I think we need to put that in the hands of the experts to help filter through the information so that we are most efficient and are really sticking at the policy level.
If I can just clarify, the difference between what you're saying and what Alderman Black and Schmidt have suggested is just that pretty much the same thing, except we wouldn't do a formal resolution. We'd say tonight, we're, we're either interested at 500 feet, show us the details, and then go down that path, but not a formal resolution in a week or two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking. So we can really start this process moving forward. And then when we get the information from, um, the, the staff and the individuals working on it for the city, then we can really start getting into the questions we have and our unresolved concerns once we really have a good grasp on what the potential proposals are.
So it, it's not dissimilar, really?
Yeah, slightly different.
Yeah. Okay. Alderman Lauer.
I just, uh, again, I want to reiterate, I think we need to buy in from the citizens because they do have a major stake in this. Um, if this is not a community-wide effort, I don't think it will fly. Uh, I'm not sure that this is the economic environment that we should be operating or even, uh, looking at, to be honest with you. Um, the latest information that I've got is that we're, uh, running, our, our current hotel years are running in, in the, uh, maybe 50% ratio right now, maybe just a little bit more than that. Um, and so you're bringing in other 60 rooms, it's probably not going to have a huge effect. But if you bring another, uh, 100 or, or more rooms, it certainly will, unless we've got an improvement in our, uh, local economy and we've got things, um, cranked up. I, I, from the job losses that we're looking at, I'm not sure we're there. So I'm very, very cautious. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Alderman Fruen, and then Alderwoman Hellman.
I think this has really been a very good discussion and, uh, we've come a long ways, I think. And I would hope that maybe all of us would be able to sign on to some resolution that said we are for the revitalization of downtown, or however that's phrased. I don't know what that means, but at least it's a, a statement of interest to say it's an important, important part of our future. Uh, did we give Jeff the night off?
I guess. He was here only for the, he was here only for the very first. He had another commitment.
He deserves a night off once in a while. So I heard this Q and A, questions to staff, get some questions answered, and I heard, uh, a resolution. And so in addition to what we talked about tonight, this council's talked about other, quote, downtown properties. Uh, you know, we've got a Coachman Lot, we've got the Sugar Creek Lot, we're talking about the library expansion, on and on and on. And I just think we need a more global, uh, council togetherness on what it is we can bite off. Cause I for one, we can't bite all this off, or it's got to be phased in, in some degree. And so the reason I asked about Jeff's attendance is I hope this fits. I guess I would suggest some kind of a, an executive session, since we're talking about real estate, acquisition of property. I don't know if that's a stretch, David, but I think we could have a more direct and focused conversation in an executive session than we can here tonight about to what degree are we in? We, we can all buy in, but what's that mean? And I don't know if that means all in, if that means I'm in for one part, I'm in for one building, I'm in for this, I'm in for that. But I also agree with Amelia that, um, I've fallen into this trap, that we get up here and we think, no, I shouldn't say it that way, it's going to be too hard. But we got to remind ourselves that we're not experts on a lot of the things we deal with. Maybe it's bonding, maybe it's police work, maybe it's golf course management, whatever it is. But this is a, this is a deal that's a lot of money and a lot of stake and a lot of public, uh, engagement here because it's a huge investment in our community. It's more than downtown. And I guess I am more aligned with Amelia that we really need some help and some guidance to walk us through this, to s- to determine how are we going to proceed with this? Is it a six-month plan? Is it a six-year plan? So I'm favoring an executive session for a more direct and focused discussion that we can turn give David before we go forward. Right now, I think it's just kind of superficial.
What we may need to do is talk to Jeff. There, there are certain things that we can probably do in executive session that are dealing with property acquisition, but if it's more of a policy kind of discussion, we may need to split those and have two on one. But I see some heads nodding, David.
And, and exactly. And we've had several discussions with Jeff. And again, it, as the mayor said, if you are talking about acquisition of property, that is allowed, you know, in closed session. But just to enter into a, say, a development agreement, uh, whether it's be Colonial Plaza, whether it's, you know, one of these gentlemen, that is a topic you cannot be in closed session to kind of work out, negotiate. Hence, that's why a lot of times the council will identify their high-level goals, priorities, principles, uh, you know, your risk tolerance, et cetera, et cetera. And then you turn to the city manager and staff and consultants to kind of work through the details and bring back to you, uh, it's, say, like a, ultimately, uh, a redevelopment or a development agreement that would meet those higher-level policy statements that you have agreed to, at least the consensus or majority has agreed to in public.
Jim Tohut.
Just very quickly, I'm all on board, agree a hundred percent. I understand the executive session thing. But my point is, we can turn this over to staff, or we can turn it over to them a week from now or two weeks from now with a little more direction. I, I just don't know, when are we going to turn over? At the beginning, or are we going to try to define it a little bit more for you, is what I'm trying to-
It, it seems as if at the very least we now have a con- it seems like a consensus. And I'll ask one last time, if, if that's not the case, that we, we need some more information and that we will perhaps move forward on gathering it. We'll have another meeting, uh, maybe part of it, if it deals with property acquisition in executive session. The policy decisions would have to be an open session to weigh the information that we get from these gentlemen and from, uh, our consultants. Um, Alderwoman Hellman.
Thanks. Um, the agenda does say that we have a discussion with city council and Mr. Friedman, city manager and staff. Um, I'm just curious if, um, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but do you have any thoughts on what, what's been presented tonight and how to, what we might consider going forward? Mr. Friedman?
As he's coming up, I, I do want to point out, one of the reasons we also brought in Steve Friedman is because he's worked with so many cities on process. And we, you know, in the early discussion, we said we need some help here because I think that's going to be very vital, that we have the best process leading to the best possible, you know, solution as to how we can help incentivize or work with downtown developers.
Thank you. I have to live up to that now.
Yeah.
Um, there's no perfect process, but it seems to me, um, first of all, that there is a high-level question. And do you want to encourage downtown development revitalization? You've had a plan. Um, I believe you've adopted the plan. There's also, I said before, there's no such thing as a perfect feasibility study. There's no such thing as a perfect plan. But they become a framework to begin to think about where your opportunities are and then your priorities. Um, you also have the market speaking, saying that we're interested in coming downtown. Um, I, I don't have current data to address your question, uh, Mr. Lauer, about where the, the hotel market is right now. I, I did just check at the time that in 2013 data was a lot better than that data in terms of what the opportunities were. Those are the kinds of things that will, that you do have to kind of continuously look at. There can also be locational differences in terms of what somebody sees as an opportunity and a risk they're willing to take at a particular time. Downtown's time, um, may be now, as the, the people who are interested in investing downtown are suggesting. So you've got a, a problem, you've got to, you've got a very high-level question, you want to invest in, invest in downtown. Then the next tier is what of the priorities, how do you set the priorities among the many project possibilities? And then taking a cut of the ones you're interested in, maybe both of these or parts of these and these other projects, the public projects, start to figure out how much money you have that you can, that you can generate and what can you afford and whether these are, that you can afford them. And whether they need everything they're asking for. They may not, they may not need what they're, all the, that they're asking for. I mean, I, I wouldn't come into the city council and ask for the, the, the minimum that I might think I might eventually accept after the project was further designed, et cetera, in the first shot. I think they're looking for a, a sense of prin- of the principle, are you ready to get engaged in this process? That's, uh, and I think it is a chicken/egg proposition, problem of you're never going to have, you're not going to have all the information. You have a lot more information now than you had yesterday in terms of what the ideas are. We don't, we don't know, we haven't vetted them. We don't know, uh, we don't know, uh, even on a first cut, on a fatal flaw basis, what each one is. And that's really the first thing that we think, we were thinking we might do. Then give, if, if there's encouragement and we are willing to say, yes, we think we can work with these projects, then you can expect the developers to get into greater levels of detail. But you're not going to sign on the bottom line until you have everything that you need to be confident and to understand what the level of risk is. But you got to, to move it forward, you have to move forward the, the way, uh, the Alderwoman is suggesting, that you, you start to gather the information. And we are, we have been talking about doing it as a, uh, higher, higher level fatal flaw analysis first to then see whether they're worth getting into in greater detail. And that-
If I can just ask, is, is everybody okay with that? Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Um, I think that that-
I still think we need to have input from the citizens first before we buy in.
Well, I think one, one doesn't preclude the other. I think, you know, we, we currently still have, uh, open meetings, uh, open houses, whatever, you know, we can-
If you put the, the two concerns of Alderman Fruen and Alderman Lauer together, um, about priorities and public involvement, public thinking about it, that may be an opportunity to have a mini-process on prioritization that can include both of those and can include getting some input from some of the, from members of the community as well. So, um, you know, gets the land acquisition, you don't want to, you want to keep your powder dry. But when it gets to priorities, that's a, that is a policy kind of question. And maybe those two thoughts can be brought together at the same time as you begin to get more information about which, which and what projects are in fact feasible.
Sure. Alderwoman Burgess, and then Black.
Um, and I think that Alderman Lauer makes a very good point. I think we need to have more public conversation about this. However, I will note that I do not feel limited in my ability to say, you know, whether or not I would like to move forward for the lack of public, uh, input, because we have had extensive public input up to now. Not on these particular projects, but on the downtown revitalization question. It's something that we've talked about in this community frequently, and certainly this is not the first time we've discussed it as a council this year. Uh, in the hopes to move this conversation along, um, I, I will go ahead and, and publicly state that if we fully vet these projects and, and, um, you know, we make it through that process, I will support them. Maybe, and I, not these projects necessarily in particular, but the whole idea of public-private partnership in order to move downtown forward. Because on, on the big-picture level, a fully-vetted project, I, I'm convinced will, um, the potential benefits will outweigh the potential risks and the economic, uh, potential will, will move our city forward. And so I think that this is something we need to strongly consider. Does this mean we need to buy into any of these projects at this point in time as they're presented? Of course not, because we don't have a full, uh, proposal yet. But in the interest of moving this forward and giving the, the staff some guidance, I strongly support development of downtown Bloomington. And I think that we need to look at what is our appropriate role in order to really make sure that these underperforming properties are, are maximized in their benefit to the community and the revenue that they generate.
And, and just to, to clarify on that, we, you know, the, the downtown plan that we did adopt two years ago was a project of lots of, of focus groups. Bringing on Bloomington involved several thousand people. And that wasn't just downtown, but downtown was a critical piece of that. It was obviously a critical issue in the last mayoral campaign. Um, you know, I certainly made no secret of, my support for revitalizing downtown as one of many means to try to drive a global, local economy. So it's not as if it's a new subject.
Right.
Uh, but it is important, obviously, for us to have continued conversation, especially if we've got, and once we get more details on some specific projects, that may or may not, uh, be consistent with, uh, you know, a broader need to move forward. Alderman Black.
Thank you. Um, and we still have two items left on the agenda, so-
And we still have two items left on the agenda, so I want to move this forward. So I'm ready to, I want to give staff what they need to move forward, and I'm ready to publicly say, I think, at a high-level philosophical position, we need to be looking at these as potential opportunities. As we look at it, I want to seek an analysis as soon as possible, at a meeting, whether it be a work session or something like this, that looks at the Friedman's approach here, as well as our own economic development staff, the CVB, the EDC, I want everyone to weigh in on this. And I'm, if no resolutions, fine, that's my opinion, and I hope that we can agree on that and move forward tonight, so you get the clear direction you need.
I think we have, I see some nodding heads, I think I've heard at least majority support for getting more information and gathering that. And in fact, thank you all very much, thank you, Mr. Gabelhausen, and Mr. Bentley, yeah, there he is, there's Mr. Bentley, thank you very much. Again, obviously, we all share the same goals, I know Jeff has been involved in lots of downtowns, your, you know, own, got your heart and soul and effort into downtown, so, and we do have to, we did have to ask some tough questions, too, along the way, so I very much appreciate that. At this point...
Mayor?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, David, do you, did, did we, I put myself in there, although I didn't say much, do you have enough direction to move forward?
Yes, definitely for tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Now, did, if you refresh my memory, in terms of public comment, did we put public comment after eight?
Yeah.
Before nine, okay. Public comment, we have actually one person who has...
No, 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 it was right before the German, so we did this first.
Oh, but you've decided not to comment?
Hold on.
You are, okay. So we now go to public, or, excuse me, city council discussion regarding budget priorities, I'm going to turn this over to Alderman Schmidt.
Well, I didn't turn one in earlier, because I didn't have anything to offer at the beginning, but since you changed it, I just got a word.
Was this the time that we suggested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Come on forward, Karen.
This will be really quick, and, you know, I don't know either one of these gentlemen here tonight, certainly because Mr. Bentley has existing buildings and more firm plans, I think those are much more firm, at least you know the framework of what you're getting. I guess what does concern me a bit, both in some public statements and, you know, questions tonight, the fact that somebody questions what the city's course of action has taken, you know, specifically the lawsuits, and I don't know a thing about the lawsuits, so I may be completely wrong, the city is not infallible. You can look at any number of decisions over the past 15, 20 years to know that. You should make these decisions based on the facts, whatever they are, and as long as a man is of good character and has demonstrated that in his performance, full speed ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Now, we're going to move on then to Alderman Schmidt, under council discussion regarding budget priorities.
Thank you. You have the spreadsheet in front of you, for some reason, the tally didn't come through, and I think Cherry and I can work to make sure that everybody's got a completed one. Just in the interest of time, I'm going to tally up on each page the ones that were the top vote-getters. On first page, downtown hireback had 10 votes, number five, and sickly buyback had seven votes. Then on to the second page, solid waste changes had six votes. All told, BCPA, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, all of those items related to the BCPA, and in addition, number 25 related to the BCPA, and altogether, that was 18 votes. On the third page, items, let's see, 22 and 23 and 24, we had 12 votes altogether with that. And on the back page, item 29 was the top one with five, and the rest of them were like one and two, three, maybe. So just in summary, it looks to me like interest in the BCPA, interest in downtown hireback, sickly buyback, and then, and golf. And I'm thinking, it'll be easier to see this, I think, when you look at the full tally sheet, but I think we were looking here to try to identify the areas where we had the highest level of consensus, around which we wanted to direct staff to spend some time thinking about service changes and service cuts or reductions. In addition to this, Alderman Fruen had reminded us that we'd done some work back in 2014, and David Beth Oakley, I think, found that document. I've also had a couple of aldermen say to me that they thought that we had acted on that document, and had actually made some choices off of that document. I'm not sure where that stands, but if those are still active items, we should probably roll that in to this conversation? I don't know.
And I'll just add that I think after we verified with Jim, you know, that we had the right documents, we did email that out...
Right.
But I think maybe it didn't get to everyone, or, but we certainly will, you know, make that again. But as I just quickly scanned those, yes, some of those, you might recall, the council did agree to kind of institute some cuts, they did make a decision, the majority, to reinstate things that had been proposed, that cuts at one point in time. So I do remember that, but I'd have to probably go back and take a look again, because I think there was issues there that just, no maybe formal action. As example, there was some revenue increases, revenue ideas that I think were out there, but no formal action, and, I don't know, Jim might have some more thoughts, too, but at least we tried to get out there what we verified with Jim, is I think the documents you were referring to from last year.
So it seems...
Well, this is the most recent, though, right?
Right, and it just seems to me that maybe the next steps here are to take the results of this into our November retreat, along with the opportunity to identify some other ideas. I know, you know, Alderman Lauer and others may have other ideas, we didn't hear from every alderman after the end of the budget task force conversations, and we also need to have a conversation about the sales tax and how that aligns with our general fund needs. So all of that together could be a very hefty retreat conversation. But I think you can see, at least from this, where we have some strong consensus, where we want to put some effort. And I will, I'm happy to just kind of maybe synthesize this and send something out that can be shared with, on the website.
That would be wonderful, that would be wonderful, thank you. I'm sure everybody very much appreciates that. Thank you, Karen. Alderman Fruen?
Sure, thank you. First, let me say thanks to Karen and the budget task force and others that have been involved the last few months on trying to identify some of the primary issues. I think I've verbalized it, probably would all draw the picture a little bit differently, but bottom line is, the picture's been drawn, and so let's support it, and let's record the votes, and let's go on. So this has been a good exercise. Let me backtrack real quickly to April of 14, we finished our budget, we approved our budget, we had unfinished business, that's kind of a popular thing to say, so I'll repeat it a couple of times, unfinished business. We didn't take care of that during the summer, we might have implemented a few things, we might have taken a few things off, but unless somebody corrects me or follows up tonight with a date or a meeting or something that would tell me that, Jim, here's where we took action on these steps, I'll stand corrected. But if everybody recalls, our intention was to finish unfinished business at that November 14 retreat, we never did. So I think it's best categorized as unfinished business, and I think it illustrates, there's a lot of things on that list that are on this list, that continue to be undecided, and kind of refers to Scott's comment a few weeks ago, that, hey, we're getting a little bit tired of regurgitating all these things, let's make some decisions and move on. So I agree with that. I appreciate Karen's tally on this sheet, and I might be a minority, I don't know where I fit in, but I'm not a fan of the three-vote process, the waiting, if you will. I think what it boils down to is, how many individual aldermen do we have that will show interest in a particular item? And I think Maboka brought this up at the last meeting, we talked, we started out with 10 dots, then we went to 10 votes, and then we talked about, how does that slant the vote, et cetera, and then we got down to three. So I think this illustrates that situation. And I got thinking, I looked at myself first, and I said, well, how did I come out here? And here's one perspective to look at this, we've got 33 items on here. Eight of these 33 items had no comments, eight of 33. Goes to what I said at the last meeting, was that we have way too much on our plate, we need to take some of this stuff off our plate, and make sure staff is allocating their resources to where it belongs the best. Eight of 33 had no comments. 16 of these 33, that's half, had two people or fewer that had any interest, two people or fewer. So now we're up to 24 out of 33 items on this sheet that had two council members or less show interest in these items. So one way to look at it is that 75% of these items had two views or less. To me, it looks to me like the eight that had three or more ought to be where we put our focus. Now, what I'd also think about is, I'll pick on myself for a minute here. Here's number 21, is a probably good example. Consider single solid waste service program for Bloomington Normal. I guess I'm the only one that showed any interest in that. So I think what could be beneficial to us is, for those of us that were the single or one of two voters on a particular issue, maybe we change our votes, because I know that's dead in the water. So maybe I need to change my voting to say where these other issues, it might fit better, and where we might find more consensus. Because right now, what I didn't tally up is, how many situations do we have where we have five or six or seven aldermen on one issue? I don't think there's more than a handful there. But I think if we re-lined our votes, it might be there. So just an observation on how we can more be, be more efficient with our time...
I think that's an excellent point.
And focus on the things that show commonality, and not on single votes, my thoughts. But again, I'll end with where I started, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I know we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you.
No, I also appreciate the work that you folks have done. I don't know that this was the appropriate way to discuss this, though. Even the statements, you know, as small as they are on here, mean something different. Jim and I had a discussion about this, between the two of us. There is a big variation between the definition of many of these things, the way I see it and the way he sees it. So I think we really need a better discussion on each one of these items, and I...
We do, phase one.
I still think that, you know, we're limiting ourselves, we really ought to be looking at each one of these areas as a place that we probably should make some sort of cut, okay? Even though maybe we didn't even vote on it, okay? I have some other areas that we should be looking at, and, you know, I don't, I didn't see where the Coliseum was on here at all.
Can you name those, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
Can you name those items? I often hear you say you have other items, I've not seen an email, we have, we have budget task force, fire away.
Here we go, I went through this last council session, the zoo expansion, the library expansion, the downtown lighting plan, downtown parking expansion, bike paths, Constitution Trail expansion, golf courses. Now, they were on here, parks are erect, the many amenities that we have, I'm not talking about closing parks, but I'm, you know, we've got a number of things that we do in that program that we really need to scale back at. Economic development, downtown, do we really need to be doing that right now? The TIF and tax abatements, I'm looking at the backside of these things, and it's costly to the rest of the community. So I think we need to have those discussions, we haven't had those.
And I can tell you feel very strongly about those, which is great, I know that you're constantly espousing those ideas, but we have, all of us have the ability to put a budget amendment forward, a resolution forward, convince us. You know, this is, I see here that, I didn't see any answers or votes from you on this sheet, and...
And I don't think it's a thorough enough discussion.
So I don't know what that means. But what I would say is that, you know, you're more than welcome to craft a resolution, I know staff will be happy to assist you, and I would love to talk about, you know, reductions in some of those areas, I think some of them are captured here, but, you know, the pontificating is what I have a challenge with this evening.
So I just want to reiterate that the whole purpose of this voting was simply to get a sense of where we want staff to spend more time giving us more information. This is not in lieu of a conversation, this is just a very, very high-level way of prioritizing and saying, you know what, we really do want to have a bigger conversation about golf courses. It doesn't diminish, in my mind, anything that's on this list, it came from the budget task force, and it came from us, and they're all legitimate, and there are more things we want to add to this, but we can't, we can't do everything, and we can't ask David and his staff to do everything, so where do they put their efforts? And that is the sole purpose of doing this, it's just an entry level.
Yeah, and then obviously, we're going to continue this at the retreat, speaking which, Alderman Hellman?
Yeah, I mean, I saw this as a starting point for us, because it's, we could start at number one and work down, but this way, we can say, okay, these are the ones that have the most interest for us, or what we feel might be able to get the biggest bang for our buck, and then we can, we can go down from there. So I mean, I thought it was a good exercise.
And I think Jim helped us along the way, too, I think, identifying, just for example, here's the places where we have more, here's a bunch that, about half of them, there wasn't any interest, so this is where we might want to concentrate, and there could be other things, this is just, we can add things to this list. If there's some specific parks programs, then let's put those down, let's talk about those, see if there's consensus on that, consensus, if there are five votes on that, right, we go forward, okay? So at this point, anything else? Oh, yes.
Mayor, if you could, just earlier in the evening, we were talking about the retreat in November...
Oh, correct.
And we kind of alluded to that, I do need to kind of, some direction on whether or not, you know, how we're going to go forward with facilitation.
I think at this point, we just had an informal conversation, if everybody's okay with this, Alderman Hellman suggested that maybe she work with Lynn Montai, who's done this in the past, at least for this next retreat, given time and the essence, that we move forward with that. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. At this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Oh, my brain is dead.
A lot.
Oh, my God.
It's cold in here, man.
Yeah.
It's so awful.